Everybody needs to start another one.
I want it right here.
We just started. Let's lead it to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Councilmember Bump, bump, here. Councilmember Emily Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Happy.
Here.
Councilmember Keller.
Here.
Councilmember Pruitt.
Here.
Councilmember Seager.
Here.
Mayor Wood. Cheers. Right. Attention or amendments to the amendment?
I don't have any. You must counsel this.
I was hoping that we might do a re-vote on council president tonight.
Does council want to do that tonight, a re-vote on council president? According to the council procedures, once the motion was done, I could have seconded it. I could have, but I needed to point out the senior member of the council prior to doing that. So do we want to, how do we want to handle it?
I think, if I may speak, that it's important that this council start here and start the new council following council procedure. And knowing if we make a mistake, then we'll make it right. That is, just asking for adding it to the action items.
We're going to add it to the action items?
If that's what we need to do.
Kathy, do you have any what your thoughts are on it? No? So. We've put it down at seven?
Seven A.
Seven A, yeah.
Seven A. Okay, thank you.
I was just going to say, I think really, it really should be moved up to seven A and bump everything else down. It was our first action item in the last meeting, and I think there's reason for that.
Yeah.
We need, you know, so I think.
Okay, seven A. Okay, seven A. All right. And adoption of the consent agenda?
I have to move to adopt the consent agenda. Including the federal action that's January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five council meeting, ratification of bills amount of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand four hundred and ten dollars and seven cents.
May I ask a point of order? If we are revoting, doesn't matter because we're just approving the minutes that happened, or can we say passed?
Correct. This is reiterating what happened. You can't go back and change history.
Thank you.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Any opposed? No. Thank you. Changing it up. All right, we got special presentation from the Hood River County Sheriff's Office, Sheriff English.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. So with the latest contracts that we signed last year, I'm going to start coming quarterly, or somebody from our office will come quarterly to speak with the council. So generally, I come at least once a year, but we just kind of bump that up a little bit. So I am here making myself available for any questions. But basically, the sheriff's office, we're in a lot better shape than we have been the last couple of years. We're fully staffed on the enforcement side. Unfortunately, our dispatch center is very shorthanded, and we've been having issues finding folks to fill those positions. That's kind of a national issue that we've been seeing. We're hopeful that we can get some qualified people in there because that's the front lines for everyone. We need somebody to answer those phones twenty-four hours a day. So our dispatch team has really been stepping up the last several months and have to work mandatory overtime every week to make sure that we provide citizens with the service that they deserve. But our enforcement division, as I mentioned, is full staff. So our last deputy that we hired late last year is currently at the Police Academy in Salem, and will graduate mid-year this year. And so we're looking a lot better in that respect. I understand that there may be some questions from the council, so happy to answer anything that you may have.
All right, correct. During budget, I, we had this discussion, and I don't remember what the outcome was, on revenue sharing on tickets that you write here in Cascade Locks. Is there a reason why that can't be shared with city in Cascade Locks, is there?
Yeah, I, and I can't remember either. I think there were some technical things, and there may be something in O R S, because I know that came up, but it really wasn't. I don't, I just don't remember the outcome, quite frankly, of that.
Amazing.
Thank you. Yes, because when League of Oregon Cities helped talk about the speed cameras, and that there might even be funding to put up speed cameras, and then I asked about the revenue sharing with the League of Oregon Cities, and they said, well, it would probably follow the same agreement you made with Hood River County. So it is hopefully something that we can look at more deeply this year about some sort of revenue sharing, particularly if we can get some speed cameras or, because it is my understanding, it wouldn't, we couldn't do revenue sharing if we didn't have a judge, but someone could correct me if I'm wrong. I think we do have a city judge that we contract that.
Correct.
Correct, so.
And I know that was part of it, was the citations that we write are under Oregon revised statute, not municipal code. And so they run through the Justice Court or the Circuit Court. And I know in the Circuit Court, and even, you know, a lot of the Justice Court, it's delineated by law where that revenue has to go. I can tell you with a hundred percent certainty, we don't get very much revenue out of that. And our budget, it's not a revenue generator. But on the subject of like speed cameras and what studies have red light cameras, I know they changed the law several, I think a couple of years ago, because it was statutorily only cities of a certain size could do that. I know they have opened that up where, where I think it's maybe all cities now. And that is a program that I believe the city could run. And so that may be something to explore, because I know, having spoken with a police chief in a smaller Oregon city, they had a red light camera that generated a lot of revenue for the city proper.
Thank you.
Seager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So thank you, Sheriff English, for joining us this evening. So just a few questions. Uh, hold on, let me pull up my notes here. I'm so sorry. Okay, yeah, first one was the, you know, we approved that stipend in a couple of meetings ago. And I'm kind of curious, who is our currentless signed officer that's patrolling, you know, for our contract? I understand there's been some change there, and has there any, is there any interest in someone taking advantage of stipend and maybe moving to Cascade Locks that you're aware of? That's my first question.
No, not that I'm aware of. And, you know, we have to address some of this stuff through collective bargaining. The stipends and that contract is probably going to be open this year. Because there's some contract language that would have to change. I know that Mr. Bennett, myself, and Allison Williams, our administrative, county administrator, kind of talked about that. I think there's some things that need to happen to rectify that. And then on your question about who is assigned, so we don't assign it, they bid those shifts. In this quarter, the deputy is Deputy Blackman. And I think he's bid the next two quarters, this quarter and the next quarter, so down here for six months.
Okay, so am I understanding right that there might be an issue with someone taking advantage of the stipend because of the bargaining contract? Can you tell me? I don't understand what you're saying there.
That's correct, because there's some language in collective bargaining agreement currently about stipend and how that would work. And I know what the discussion was, you know, with the city and what the the desire was. But yeah, it's something that will have to be bargained and addressed in collective bargaining.
So does that mean that if a deputy wanted to move to Cascade Locks, they couldn't get the stipend right now? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, and the other thing, yeah, that's, that's the way that I'm seeing it. And the other thing, I went through the contract again, and I didn't see that specific language about the the number in that contract. But yeah, that's something that we'll visit this year in the next few months.
Okay, so my next.
Sorry. Yeah, there is language in the current contract that there was a range of dollars that basically a deputy could collect for being assigned to Cascade Locks. But that hasn't been paid out for years because a deputy, we used to pay it to deputies when they were assigned down here. It initially started when they lived in the city of Cascade Locks, and then that continued after that residency requirement was lifted, which was actually before my time. And then it was paid off and on to deputies that were assigned down here, but it was a small amount. It was like fifty dollars a month.
Right, well. I'm not sure if that was a unanimous vote, but as someone who, it was insupportive of that, I would like that to give the attention as much as possible that that's on the table for that deputy, and we can take advantage of that and hopefully get somebody to move into town. That's very much a priority as, from my perspective as a council member and. Okay, so next thing was, you know, when we have these meetings, I would love if you could just kind of give us a, you know, a public safety overview. I'm curious to hear, like, what are the trends you're seeing? You know, I, it sounds like, I just read the newspaper and, you know, occasionally check in and, you know, COVID had a spike in crime, it looks like, across the country, but things have really settled down. I mean, i- is that what you're seeing in Hood River County and Cascade Locks? Are things settling down, or are they, you know, at like ten-year lows or five-year highs, or where are things generally in our public safety picture for our town? Where would you put them?
Yeah, I can say, you know, one of the things that Hood River County has struggled with, and this is countywide, is Hood River County has a pretty high level of property crime. And that's, you know, a lot of it can be related to tourism and visitors. We see spikes during like the summer months of car break-ins at our trailheads, both at the west end of the county here, and then we'll see them in the wintertime up on Route thirty-five, where we have a lot of use of the trailhead, of the snow parks. Because people will frankly make their living, and it's a really quick thing, and break windows out if you leave valuables that are visible and, and they're gone over the hill into Multnomah County or Clackamas County. And so that's not uncommon. We've seen, in the valley recently, we've seen some pretty significant burglaries that have been occurring, but you know, we saw a rash of car break-ins here in the late, or late summer, early fall at some of the hotels here in Cascade Locks. And again, it's people that are making, you know, that are kind of making a quick smash and grab and looking for easy targets when there's valuables that are left in cars. And I think we made arrests in some of those cases. We've had, I know we had a business break-in here that we made arrests on. And so that's, you know, our primary issue. I think, you know, it's, it's, one of the positives is we have a really quite a low violent crime rate. We don't see a ton of violent crime. It does occur, but it's at lower rates than average generally. I would say that, you know, there was a lull, you know, during COVID. It started to pick back up, and you could see that in our calls for service, the amount of, you know, calls that we're getting on a daily basis. I think we're getting back up to normal and starting to see those trends rise, because we were seeing very significant increases over, you know, five, ten-year period of very steady increase in calls for service. That stopped with COVID, dropped down, and then, you know, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two were, were slower, and then it started to pick back up. So I think we're kind of back in, you know, what I would call normal range.
And how about illicit drug use?
Yeah, that's unfortunately a problem all the way across, all across the state. We, you know, as you probably know, in September, as a result of House Bill four thousand two, it recriminalized the possession of hard drugs that had been decriminalized by Major one-ten. And so we haven't really seen a lot of the impacts of that, what that's going to look like for the criminal justice system. But that was actually one of the things I was going to touch on at some point tonight. But so, you know, unfortunately, with the illicit drug use, we see a lot of mental health issues as well. And so our jail has a very significant number of people that are suffering from mental illness now, and a lot of it is either driven by or a result of hard drug use. So it's just, it's a daily occurrence now. And kind of on that note, so as part of House Bill four thousand two, the legislature set aside a significant amount of money for counties to start deflection programs. And we were able to take advantage of that. We partnered with Wasco County, Hood River County, through our office is actually running that program for both counties. And so that program is going to create another avenue for people with, that are suspected of possessing small amounts of narcotics or other crimes that essentially are public disorder crimes. So like, we're seeing somebody with doing a lot of criminal trespassing in businesses, causing low-level disturbances, like disorderly conduct and their possession of drugs. And so we're going to be able to move those people into a really intense program where we have case managers that will basically do a lot of hand-holding until people can get engaged in services, try to meet them where they are, you know, what their immediate needs are, whether it's housing, food, if they want to get into treatment. And so we've been able to hire the two positions that we had funding for. Started them about a month and a half ago, and they're being trained and are shadowing. They were just in Marion County last week or the week before, for a week, because they have a longstanding deflection program there. So we're using a national model called LEAD, which is law enforcement assisted diversion. And we are working, we, in fact, we had a meeting this morning with the National LEAD Team. They're providing us technical assistance and training. So I think that's going to be a real positive for the community. It's a program that we've never seen before. It's going to give us the ability to really stick with these folks and hopefully make a difference and, you know, case by case, hopefully get them on the right track and get them the services that they need. So I'm really encouraged about that. It's pretty exciting for our office.
Okay, congrats. That's excellent news. My last one, and I apologize if this comes off a little political. I'm not trying to be, but can you share with us the, the county's policy on this undocumented immigrant issue that, you know, we're hearing a lot about in the news?
Yeah, so I don't, you know, it's, it's something that we're getting a lot of questioning about, because I think there's a lot of question, there's a lot of concern. But, you know, it's not a policy, it's a law, and Oregon law is very clear about what we can and can't do. And in Oregon, law enforcement can't enforce immigration law. We never could anyway, because that's a federal law. But it makes it, there's a very bright line there about information that can and can't be shared, and it's very, very limited on what we can share with federal authorities. You know, and frankly, there is, I think there's a lot of question about what's happening at the national level. I think that's still being sorted out about what this is going to look like for our communities and, you know, what enforcement's going to look like. Actually going to DC on Saturday, and we're going to hopefully get some clarity from the administration so we can answer these questions going forward, because it is certainly something that's pressing in our communities. There's a lot of question about it. But, you know, people want more information. Oregon DOJ has a great website on Oregon's immigration laws and what can and can't happen. And so you can search that. I think it's called the Oregon Sanctuary Promise, and it's very well lined out, explains all the statutes that are applicable, but they're in O R S Chapter one-eight-zero and one-eight-one.
Thank you.
Really appreciate the traffic trailer we have in town, but since it's been over on the west side of Wampa, I don't know if it's under trees and the solar panels on charge and battery, it's been out for a couple of weeks.
Okay.
It's already.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
But I think it makes a difference. It does.
Yeah.
Help.
Yeah, we're, we're very pleased with those. We have a couple of them, and they're super helpful and makes it nice when you can use the solar charging. So I will make sure that our servants do that and.
I think it's a great place. Yeah, I just think it's a good.
Yeah, this time of year, you're getting less exposure on the charge.
Thank you for being here and for the work you do in Cascade Locks and your team. I love this LEAD program, the deflection program. Can you quickly say what folks in Cascade Locks can do to help get people we notice into that? What do we do?
Yeah, so it's, we're going to have a really limited capacity because there's only two people right now, and we're trying to, number one, we're looking at additional funding because we know that's not going to be sufficient. So we may be looking at some community organizations as well, partnering with like the medical community potentially, but then we're also trying to bring on at least one other county, hopefully. And then I know legislatively, they're going to, they're, they've put a little more money towards it for this legislative session for the next biennium, biennium. But the way that that program works is, number one, the primary referral is going to come from law enforcement in the field. And so because essentially what happens is law enforcement are getting these calls, they're familiar with the people, and then they'll have the choice, like, okay, I think they could benefit from this program. And we're actually looking at people, it's not first-time offenders, it's people that have had a pretty significant histories, like four, five, six or more arrests of these, you know, low-level kind of nuisance crimes, the calls that were, or the, the type of crimes that we that really kind of disturb the community, but are like a low, lower level misdemeanor. And then we are looking, we're going to be looking for like social referrals. So we'll be out in the community. Our LEAD worker's already out. And so, you know, they will be talking to people, but like, you know, there's a business owner or something that says, hey, this person is, you know, always standing around in my doorway, and they kind of bother people and this and that. They might be, you know, they might be benefited from a program like this. We, you know, want to hear about that.
Thank you for that. And my second, because you mentioned it, the legislature, we are having a team go to the L S C City Day. And if there was something we could say about law enforcement and Cascade Locks, what would you wish we could say?
Well, I think it's just continuing to support, you know, programs like this. This program is funded through the C J C, the Criminal Justice Commission. They're great partners. And they're really easy to work with, and I know that they are asking for more money. So I think it's just supporting that ask. And then there's another ask that has to do with community corrections funding. There is what's called a cost study that we do in community corrections every three or four years. And it's the actual cost study. The legislature historically has never funded that, that full actual cost study. And so this year, for the first time ever, Governor Kotek actually put, I think, twenty million of that actual cost study in her proposed budget. So advocating that that funding for our parole probation, because that makes a huge difference as well. That's, you know, our parole probation officers or deputies that are out doing the casework, making sure that people are getting services that they need, et cetera. So those two things would be really helpful.
And to clarify, you call that the community?
It's community corrections funding.
Community corrections fund.
Yeah, and that's part of department corrections.
Okay.
Budget.
So much.
For me, Sheriff English is, I would like to know, like, our evacuation plans, like whether it's eighty-four's closed, or whether we have a fire or a mudslide, like, what is that plan? Can we train for it? Are we going by boat? Are we going by helicopter? How are we getting out of here? Because there's many times here in Cascade Locks, we get shut in here. And I would like to know that we have a plan before the big thing happens, that people are aware of, and that we know, like, hey, we're going to, we're going to get on a boat, or we're, whatever we're going to do. So I spoke with our fire chief, and he said that he makes the call like it's level three or whatever, but the sheriff actually is in charge of the evacuation plans. And do we have that? And is it a way that we can do like training with our community on what these are, so we do have a way to get out of here?
Yeah, and that's a great question. And, you know, it's really driven by the event. So it's really dependent on where, where it's happening and what's happening that's going to kind of dictate where we evacuate and how we do that. You know, we unfortunately had firsthand experience in twenty-seventeen and having to evacuate the majority of the city, and some of the folks, you know, here were out of their homes for a couple of weeks. And so, you know, there was some lessons learned there for sure. We continue to improve that. And our emergency manager, Charles Young, he works through our office as well. He's constantly working on that. In fact, he's just, we're in final approval for the natural hazards mitigation plan, which works on that also. The community wildfire protection plan. Those are in final approval. And then we have actually just partnered with a new software company called Perimeter. And we will be launching that, which will help with evacuations. It's going to provide the community with more information. They'll be able to go to the perimeter website, see where evacuation points are. It's actually four evacuation routes, which will be fantastic, because we can map those real time. Your fire chief, I believe, was at the training as well. Actually, I know he was, because we worked on it live a few months ago and kind of practiced with that software. But it's really nice, because the fire department can go to, you know, some event, they can start putting things in. Everybody else can see it. And then like law enforcement could come in and be working on evacuation routes, put that on the map and post it. And so then fire can see it, and so you're sharing information, and then it gets posted out to the community. I think it's going to be a pretty slick tool. They're using it. And it was started in California with all of their wildfire experience, and now some states have, entire states have bought into this. So they have a lot of experience. It's a pretty user-friendly piece of software, and I think it'll be real positive for the community and those routes, the shelters, et cetera. They'll all be visible.
And when do you expect that to come out?
You know, we, it's, it's technically live right now, but I think we're going to, Mr. Young's working on plans to get stakeholders like fire departments and public works to start using that and how that's going to look. So because it's really, part of it's a cultural change, because people need to get used to using that software and pull it up, you know. You know, so you have it, you know, at your fingertips and it's like, oh, I can start putting this in right now. But it's very quick to do.
Would that be in addition to the reverse nine one one?
Yes. Yeah, but those two, there's some integrations in between, between those two pieces of software as well, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
Anybody else have any questions?
All right. Yeah.
So next on the agenda is staff from Aldridge and Associates to discuss the audit findings from fiscal year 2122.
All right. So can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. So I am Jessica Luther Haynes. I am a senior manager at Aldridge CPAs and Advisors, and I oversaw your audit for the year ended June 30, 2022. I'm going to start here by sharing my screen. Can somebody turn on screen share, please?
Okay, it should be good.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Can you all see my screen hopefully? So within your agenda packets, you should have received the June 30, 2022 audited financial statements as well as two letters. One of the letters is a management comment letter and the other letter is a general communication to those charged with governance at the conclusion of the audits. Now, what I have done is I have essentially summarized those three documents into this one document that I will be sharing my screen and presenting on. Essentially, it took those two letters and they are in here verbatim. But then the financial statement document is somewhere between 100 and 200 pages long. And in an attempt to distill that down into more user friendly information, we do have a summary in here, which I will go over. So this is the report to the city council. After I present, I will make sure to send this to Jordan to disseminate to you all as well. So you have it for your records. As I said, you do have most of the information, but this is just a slightly different format. So going to the first page that we'll go over is what we call the executive summary. And this essentially distills down our audit opinion and the audit findings that we had as a result of our audit procedures. Now, as indicated, this was for the June 30, 2022 fiscal year end, so a couple of years now late. And we did complete our audit and we issued our report dated December 30th, 2024. So right about a month ago now. And based off of our work performed, our audit scope was in accordance with that communicated in our engagement letter for the year ended June 30, 2022. At the start of the audit, we send an engagement letter to the city outlining what our responsibilities are, what the city's responsibilities are, what the scope of work is, what the fee is. All of that information is outlined and agreed upon by both parties. And this first bullet point essentially just says that we did everything that was outlined in the engagement letter for the year ended June 30, 2022. Now, the second bullet point, it says we rendered an unmodified opinion on the June 30, 2022 financial statements. Now, an unmodified opinion is actually the best opinion you can get. It is also referred to as a clean opinion. And it essentially means that the financial information that is presented is presented appropriately in all material respects with generally accepted accounting principles. So as I indicated, best opinion that you can get, it's a little anticlimactic since it's just an unmodified opinion, but truly the best that you can get. Now, the third bullet point there, it indicates that we perform tests of compliance with the minimum standards for audits of Oregon municipal corporations. And we identified seven instances of noncompliance. So this is a unique thing in Oregon. They have what is referred to as the minimum standards. And Oregon law stipulates that when the auditor is outperforming the annual audit of the financial statements, they will also perform compliance tests to test the entity's compliance with various Oregon state laws and regulations. Now, as a part of our testing, we test the adoption of the budget for the subsequent year. We perform procedures over procurement to ensure that you are following the appropriate procurement policies, processes, procedures as outlined. We look at the institutions where your deposits are held and make sure that they are on the state's approved list. We look at your investments to make sure that they're in accordance with state law and a few other items that we look at. So as a part of all of those procedures, we did have seven different findings. Primarily, they were associated with the budget. So you did have three findings that were involved in the adoption of the June 30, 2023 budget. So yes, we audited the June 30, 2022 financial statements. But as a part of our procedures, we're testing the process of the adoption of the subsequent year ends budget. So that process happens within the June 30, 2022 fiscal year end for the June 30, 2023 budget. So that's kind of a little nuanced and is not an error in the, in the year end there. But as a part of that adoption process, we identified that the publication of the budget hearing and the LB1 financial summary did not occur. So after the budget committee approves the budget documents, then a publication alerting the citizens needs to be published in a newspaper. And it should indicate where and when the budget hearing is going to be held. And it should include what is called an LB1, which has financial summary information, which essentially distills that budget document down into one teeny tiny little table. And in our testing, we were unable to verify whether this publication occurred. Now, the second bullet point, the actual amounts in the preceding two fiscal years' financial columns in that 23 budget documents did not agree to the audited financial statements. So when you're looking at your budget documents, the far left two columns are actual information from the two preceding years. So for the 23 budget documents, at the far left, you should have financial information for the 2020 and the 2021 financial fiscal years. And that information, we go and we compare it to the audited financial statements for those fiscal years to make sure that the information that is being presented is in line with what the audited financial statements presented. And in that test, we did identify that there were some variances between the two. And then the final bullet point related to the June 30, 23 budget indicates that the city appropriated a reserve in the cemetery trust fund, which is not allowed under ORS 294. So a city or an entity should appropriate amounts that they plan to expend in the current fiscal year. A reserve is something that you plan not to spend. You plan to actually carry that forward into the following fiscal year. And so it's not something that's supposed to be appropriated for. And that ultimately led to this finding. Now, we also tested the execution of the June 30, 2022 budget and had two findings there. The first is the general fund planning department had an over expenditure of $3,000. So essentially you as a city council adopt the budget and indicate that the planning department is allowed to spend X. And in the course of the audits or in the course of the fiscal year, they ended up spending $3,000 more than what was appropriated. And so that ultimately led to this finding here. And then the second one there is that there should have been a publication of the budget hearing for a supplemental budget. So during the course of the year, if you are going to adopt a supplemental budget, then you are also supposed to publish in a local newspaper, a notification of a budget hearing to allow citizens, users of the financial statements to come and give comments related to that supplemental budget. And in our testing, unfortunately, we were unable to verify that that occurred. Now, this bullet point, the city had not registered the name and address of each depository. So in the financial institutions, if you have deposits that are held at a financial institution, the FDIC covers up to $250,000. Now, the state of Oregon identifies and knows that cities, counties, special districts, entities within the state often have funds at these financial institutions that exceed that $250,000. And so they have created their own collateralization program. So essentially, in the event that a bank fails, if you have your deposits at an approved list or at an approved bank that is approved by the state treasurer, and if you register the name and the address of those depositories with the state treasurer, then in the event that that bank fails, then you'll be covered by the state collateral program. Now, we were unable to yet again verify that that registration had occurred. This is an annual process and I believe the city has since we notified them done this. And from here on, they will be in compliance. And then the final bullet point here, the city made various purchases from vendors in excess of $10,000, but less than $150,000. And that we were unable to verify whether the city obtained informal bids and quotes. So state law dictates that if you make those mid-level purchases from $10,000 to $150,000, say they be for equipment, say they be for like small construction projects, anything along those lines, you're supposed to obtain informal bids or quotes. So trying to ensure that the city essentially gets the best price for that item. And in our testing, yet again, we were unable to verify that that occurred. Now, this last bullet point I'm going to cover in a moment because there is an entirely separate letter related to it. But just kind of want to pause there. I know that was a lot to process. We'll certainly take more questions later, but is there, are there any questions right now that I can help answer before I move on?
I'm sorry, but what, and I, you might not know this, but what supplementary budget for 2122 happened? I was the finance person then and we did not have a supplemental budget.
I would, I would have to go back to our documents and look at the specific resolution that was adopted for that and get back to you. So that is something that I can send Jordan additional follow-up documentation after this meeting so that he can get back to you directly on that one.
Okay. And is, may I go again?
Yeah.
Okay. You indicated the city had not registered the name and address of each depository. Is that done every year and is that our US Bank and LGIP, LGPI?
So LGIP you don't have to, but US Bank, yes, you would need to. And yes, it is something that needs to be emailed to the state treasurer every year. Once you are registered, the subsequent year, I think it happens every February, the state treasurer will send you an email to re-verify the information. So it's kind of a first time initial registration, but then they'll send you an email to follow up annually to make sure the information they have on file is still accurate.
Because I've always registered, so I'm just concerned why, I mean, if it was February of '23, then I understand that we were supposed to register, but no. Okay, go ahead.
So it could be as a part of this that the city was unable to locate the documentation of this. I know that there was a lot of turnover during this fiscal year specifically and a little sense. And so that could also be the cause. If we're unable to view the documentation to support that it occurred, then we can't say it did occur, if that makes sense. So that could be what's leading to some of these findings as well.
Yes, please. Thank you. So two questions. One, you met, you're very, probably very familiar, our finance offices, it's been through a bunch of disruptions in the last couple of years. And I fear that you're going to see, you're going to do the next audit and you're going to, oh my gosh, they didn't do the depository thing. Or they didn't do the, the vendor, you know, bid process like they should have. And I mean, what is the, are there further impacts? If you see repeated audits who have similar findings, is that going to raise red flags with someone? Should we be concerned about that? Not that I'm, I'm agreeing that we need those. I mean, I'm, I'm not happy that some of these things weren't done, especially the, the vendor process. I think that's a very critical piece on, you know, how you govern your finances efficiently. But you see what I'm asking? I'm worried you're going to see this again as you, the next audit you see. I mean, what, tell us, walk us through that a little.
Yeah, so we've worked with quite a few municipalities within the state of Oregon that have also been behind on their audits. So the situation is not unique. You know, there's other organizations that have been through the same and other organizations that have had findings like these. And it's been year after year where we've had to report them because they've been, you know, two, three, four years behind. So yes, you will likely see this again next year, probably the year after that. But as for repercussions, the Secretary of State's office reviews this information. And at most, what I've seen with other organizations is they'll reach out to the city and just say, can you explain what's going on? Like, that's all that they want to know. So they want to know what is going on at the city. They want to know what the findings were, but they're also very understanding that this is not something that is unique to city of Cascade Locks. There are other organizations that are in the same boat. And as long as you have a plan to get on track, they have not, in my experience, had any negative impact on the cities.
Understand. Thank you. My last question real quick. If we asked you for the list of the, the vendor events in which we didn't get the quotes or bids, could you provide that?
Absolutely. Yep, I can send you that as well.
I, I would, I would like to see, one, how many times it happened? And then two, what was the size of these different projects? Just so I can have a sense of this. Thank you.
Absolutely. I can send that list to Jordan as well.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay. You're good now.
Okay. So, let's see, moving along. So I did want to indicate that we did receive the full cooperation of management. As a part of the audit procedures or the audit process, we asked for many documents. We asked a million and one questions, especially when it's a first year audit to us. And so I just want to point out that we couldn't do it without management and staff at the organization and the consultants that the city is working with to help them get caught up on the audits. So just want to take a moment to thank you all for helping us through this process. Now, we'll move on to the first of this letter. So this letter is the letter to those charged with governance. It has a lot of summary information about the audit. It is required communication. And so just going to kind of briefly go through this. It is three pages long. So a little bit of light reading if you want to dig into the details, but I will certainly do it at a high level here. Yet again, it discusses that professional standards require that you, that we give you this information. It outlines that we conducted the audit in accordance with the plan scoping and timing that was communicated in our letter dated June, July 30th, 2023, that is. And then it gets into significant audit matters. So this first paragraph is where we talk about the accounting policies of the city. There was a significant accounting policy change in the current year. The governmental accounting standards board, which is GASB, issues the accounting standards that are to be followed for entities that issue GAAP financial statements. And GASB number 87 leases came into effect in fiscal year 2022. Happy to report that it had no effect on your financial statements. Leases, if any, that you have were deemed to be immaterial, so their impact was, was minimal. And then getting into the accounting estimates. So a set of financial statements that is prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles using those GASB standards. There are a lot of estimates that go into preparing the financial statements. There are certain things like your bank balance, for instance. We can obtain a bank statement from the bank and we can compare your bank balance to what the bank says you have. And we can tie that number out exactly. bank statement from the bank and we can compare your bank balance to what the bank says you have, and we can tie that number out exactly. There are other numbers that require a significant amount of estimates. Uh, your net pension liability, for example, is probably the largest one that you're going to see in your financial statements. The net pension liability is related to your participation in Oregon PERS. So Oregon PERS hires an actuary, Milliman, to prepare an actuarial valuation annually. And Milliman, uh, uses various assumptions, um, and various um, data entry information to determine what the value of your net pension liability is. So there is a significant estimate that goes into projecting what that liability is. It's not something that, uh, will likely be exact. Uh, but I guess time will ultimately tell. And so this section just goes into some of those significant accounting estimates um, that are generally common and are, um, applicable to the, your city as well. Uh, this is next section talks about financial statement disclosures that are particularly sensitive. So these are the items that uh, we felt citizens, users of the financial statements would probably be most, um, concerned about or find to be most significant to them. So the disclosure of cash and cash equivalents, so how much cash the organization has at the end of the year. And then long-term obligations. So what are your debt liabilities at the end of the year? And so that simply just says, those are the, the two notes out of all the notes that we felt would be most significant. And then difficulties, we didn't have any difficulties luckily. Uh, corrected and uncorrected misstatements, you'll see later in the packets, um, if we get to that point. Um, that there is a list of journal entries that was made as a part of the audit through the course of the audit procedures. Uh, happy to report there were no disagreements with management. Um, and then this just really goes on and talks about, you know, general language, our responsibilities on different sections of the audit from the basic financial statements to the required supplementary information to the SI. Um, so that information is there, um, but just gonna really skim over it and hit on the high points here. So that's gonna bring me to the second letter here. Um, I did a moment ago indicate that last bullet point we would circle back on. And so going to circle back on that here, this is the management comments letter. So this is a letter communicating to you deficiencies in internal control. So as a part of our audit procedures, we come in and we determine, um, sorry, and we gain an understanding of your city, your operations, your processes, your procedures, and your overall internal controls that are in place, kind of those checks and balances that you have in place to make sure that transactions that are being recorded, um, through the general ledger are approved, making sure that they're accurate, they're necessary. Um, and so really looking at those internal controls to make sure that things are, um, in place to ensure that those transactions are being accurately recorded. And so we did identify one deficiency, that's a material weakness, and one deficiency, that's a significant deficiency. Um, those terms are set forth in auditing standards, so not something that Aldridge just came up with. Um, but material weakness, those are the large items. So that indicates that there is a likelihood, higher likelihood of a large, significant transaction, um, something that might be material to the users of the financial statements. Um, going through the system, going through the transaction process and not being caught if it's made an error or if it is inaccurately posted. So we did have one material weakness. Uh, city did not have appropriate internal controls in place to ensure the timely closing of the books and the subsequent audit of the financial statements. So the June thirty, twenty twenty-two audited financial statements were due to the secretary of state's audits division, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Uh, we issued our report December thirtieth, twenty-four, so, uh, two years after the facts. Um, which indicates to us that there were not appropriate internal controls in place, there were not appropriate processes and procedures in place to ensure that those books were closed timely in that an audit firm was hired to then perform the audit uh, in a timely manner. And we've kind of already touched on what some of those issues were. This is a significant turnover in the finance department, uh, that ultimately led to this. Um, and then a significant deficiency is less in scope, so something that's going to likely be smaller, uh, less likely to occur, um, and is not going to have a material impact on the financial statements. So this, the city did not have appropriate internal controls in place to demonstrate review of accounting records. Uh, so this went into really that review process. Um, making sure that there is one person preparing something and another person reviewing and posting something. Um, this could also be an instance where the documentation was not present at the city to support a review happened. Often this happens, um, at many of the municipalities that we audit where they have the process in place, but they don't document that one person is doing it and one person's reviewing it. Generally, that documentation comes in the s- um, form of a sign-off. And often that sign-off is missed, and without the sign-off, auditors can't really determine whether that review occurred or not. So yet again, this is likely a documentation issue. Um, and so it is the recommendation that the city implement sign-offs indicating that that review is occurring. So the rest of this document, it gets into those adjusting journal entries that we, um, that I briefly mentioned. And then it gets into what is called the management rep letter. So at the conclusion of the audit, we send this letter to management and ask that they sign it, and it essentially represents to us that you have, to the best of your knowledge and belief, given us true, accurate information. We've been given all of the information uh, to really allow us to do the audit. And so that letter goes on for three or four pages and was signed ultimately by Jordan. So, that is what I have for now. Um, but do you have questions on anything that was covered? Uh, or want me to go through any financial statements? I am, I am here to help in any way I can.
Um, I, I have a lot of questions on, you know, I in the next report, would we possibly get like things like definitions for what non-major governmental and culture and recreation? Some of these terms I've never heard of until I read this document.
Okay.
Like have a glossary of what these, uh, and I sent my list of questions into Jordan, so he can probably forward that on to you.
Okay, perfect.
I do have a question on page, um, thirty-three of this report. Um, you said earlier that it was, uh, acceptable to add, uh, other years into the report. Uh, I didn't quite understand that, but in this, on page thirty-three, it talks about July twenty twenty-four. And this is a report for the audit of July, uh, for, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two. So I'm wondering why we have anything in there about the year twenty twenty-four on, in this document. Uh, specifically right there in the middle of the DEQ, uh, are, in that, in that paragraph there, the loan was amended in July twenty twenty-four to a decreased amount, and the city will replay the full, the loan in full. That's, that has nothing to do with this specifically in this year.
So there is a requirement in auditions or in accounting standards that you disclose events that occurred subsequent to year end. So in our audit procedures, we had to look at those large events that happened between June thirty, twenty twenty-two and December thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. So large events generally are debt issuances because you're taking on additional liabilities. And so that is why this information is in here to discuss, hey, this was the full loan amounts, this was the amended amount, um, to talk about those subsequent events. So that, that's why that's in there. It is a little strange, but it is required by accounting standards.
So even if this, even if this is a report that would have been filed in twenty-one, twenty-two, we wouldn't have had that information available. We still have to file that information.
So you have to evaluate it through the issuance date. So if you had issued your financial statements in December of twenty-two, then you would only need to disclose those large events that happened between June thirty, twenty-two and December of twenty-two. But since it was issued in December of twenty twenty-four, you have to evaluate all of those events between June thirty, twenty-two and December of twenty-four. So just because the city is uh, behind on their audits, that's why you get into these, these instances where you do have those multiple fiscal year ends being discussed and disclosed.
Okay. It's clear as mad, doesn't it?
I know. I unfortunately don't make the accounting standards.
And then on page twenty-six, uh, twenty-six, I just have a question. We have a city, uh, administrator and not a city manager.
Okay.
There's a difference.
Yes.
And, and then on, just one more thing on page, uh, forty-two, forty, no, forty-two, yes, forty-two. And then the rest of the questions, I'll just have, uh, Jordan forward to you.
For sure.
Um, the, it says for contributions, the city makes the employee contributions of six percent. I, it just kind of is awkward. I, I wonder if it should be employee paid contributions of six percent. It just, it's, it's like it's, I don't know, the wording is just kind of odd, but that's just a schematic thing.
Okay. I will make a note of that, um, and we will evaluate it.
Well, okay. You're explaining like.
Well, may I ask, answer on something on that question? According to this, the city makes the employee contributions. You're telling us that the city that pays the six percent contributions for all the employees, and that is not true. Um, they only do it for two employees, the city administrator and the, uh, electric, uh, gentleman. Otherwise, the employee contributes it. The employee pays it. And that's how this is saying.
Correct. That is how it is saying. And yes, I would agree that if it's only two employees, then that should be updated to just be the two employees and that the rest make their own.
Yes. Thank you.
Yep.
Did you have any other questions, Mary Ann, while you're there?
I just have a statement is basically.
You want to make it now?
I can make it now. Yeah, I just have a statement. It's, it's what you guys have to do. I understand that. But just so that you know that, uh, there are appropriate internal controls. They were on the computer and nobody found them. Nobody looked for them. But there has been, I've had it in every audit that I was doing, and they were even updated for June twenty twenty-two. So, just as a statement, I just want to make it clear.
Yeah, and I think, I think from our perspective, that's probably not surprising. Um, you know, we try to request documentation and support verifying to verify that information, and anytime there's turnover, um, unfortunately, we do get into these instances. So it, it probably is somewhere, but unfortunately, um, the city was unable to locate it, or the consultants that were hired were unable to locate it.
So you're?
Yes, thank you. So, so Jessica, I think you, I, I think you're aware that we, we just hired a finance officer. We're hiring a, a, a utility billing clerk. I'm not sure exactly the title. I'm probably have that wrong. But we're gonna, we're gonna be staffed up, uh, pro- you know, per our org chart in short order here. Is it safe to say you've looked at that staffing? And you can, with, with strong confidence, say, yes, with all those guys in place, then this internal control plan should be able to be reasonably implemented. Do you see what I'm asking? Do you feel confident that once we have our people in place that we can get our internal controls back where they need to be?
So I will say that at this point in time, what we did for the June thirty, twenty twenty-two audit, most of that work happened in twenty-three and into early twenty-four. And so we really were looking at what was in place in that time period. So now that the city has hired those individuals, um, we will, yes, need to, at this point in time, now that they're hired, or once they're officially hired, uh, go through those processes and procedures and make those recommendations to you before the fiscal year end is up. So it wasn't in place, and so it's not technically a part of this audit. But now that that is in place, then the city can provide those, that internal control information to us, and we can certainly uh, take a look at that and make sure that, um, we don't see anything that would rise to the level of a significant deficiency or material weakness.
Madam America, can I ask one more?
Yeah.
Yeah, so just for the city administrator, so city administrator Bennett, is it clear to you what needs to be done to get the, the internal controls back in their proper order, uh, given, you know, this work that the auditor has done? And of course, you've got this new, uh, finance officer on board. I'm sure you've talked about this. Do you have a clear path in your mind on getting this remedy?
Oh, yes. Yeah, it's part of the plan of action for approval tonight, as well as the, um, updating of the internal controls.
Excellent. Thank you.
I just had one question. Um, I know Jordan had reached out to you guys a couple of weeks ago after the last council meeting, and then I'm getting these other two audits done quicker, and what that looks like, and do you have an answer for us?
So, yes, I have been working with our scheduling team to see when we could move up the audit to, and so now I need to talk to the city um, and figure out if that timeline works for the, uh, for them. So as I indicated, we do have quite a request list that goes out of things that we need the city to prepare. Um, and I don't have a clear, um, idea at this point in time if all of that has been prepared um, or what the timeline is to prepare it. So I want to make sure that the city has appropriate time to prepare that information um, to allow us to then jumpstart and get, get the audit rolling. So yes, I have it on my agenda to email Jordan tomorrow and make sure that our timeline that we're talking about um, works with what the consultants and what the city, um, has prepared.
You know, yeah, it's kind of. All right.
Perfect.
Very good.
Thank you, Jessica.
All right. Thank you all very much. Have a good night.
All right. Appearance of interested citizens? We have any? No? All right, public hearing?
No public hearing.
Right, so we moved seven A for the redo the, um, election, uh, the vote of the council president?
Yes.
And you're, I mean to say, who would have been the senior councilperson prior, correct?
I just noted that councillor Happy was the council president. I don't think seniority really matters.
Yeah, so so we're revoting for council president. So that it's done correctly, because I did not name Happy as the senior councilperson. We're gonna move the four on age second.
Yeah.
Yeah, he would be presiding officer if you're five and a half. Make a motion or a second, right?
Yes. So.
Do you have to make that motion again?
Yes.
Yeah.
We have to do everything again?
Yep.
Okay. I make a motion to, um, elect Tiffany Pruitt, Pruitt as, uh, vice president. Counselor President. I'm sorry, I've got my mind right here, and it's not there. Counselor President, I'm sorry.
All right, and then, do I need to make that statement before I throw the second? Is that what you're gonna do?
I think you, if you were going to make a motion or a second, you would have passed over presiding this portion of the meeting to the senior member of this council.
Yeah, correct, bef- before making the second. Correct.
So I'll pass it to Pete Haffing.
Now the acting presiding officer, he has a second.
And I'll second.
Right, we have a motion by, uh, Mayor Bump, uh, for Ms. Pruitt, uh, to be, uh, nominated as a council president, seconded by, uh, Mayor Wood. Discussion.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate Ms. Pruitt's, um, knowledge on details, and I feel that since we have a new in, um, chambers mayor this year, that it would be nice to have an incumbent, um, council president. Not that there's a whole lot that has to be done, um, but that was my feel, um, to have um, the senior member sitting with us to be, I would like to nominate later. Uh, that's why, uh, I am not in favor of the new person just elected to be the president along with the new mayor. So that was my comment. And, um,
Somebody else have any more in the discussion?
That's, that's me.
Yeah, sorry.
Thanks, Mr. Keller. Uh, does anybody else have any other comments they'd like to add on this topic? Before we move on. Can I comment if I'm the presiding officer on an open motion?
Yeah.
You can, yeah.
Uh, so I just wanted to say, uh, you know, I've been honored to serve in that capacity for the last two years. I'm honored to continue in that role if the council wishes. I also want to say that I think that Pruitt would do a fantastic job in that position. So, um, that's all I have to add. Any other discussion? Uh, seeing no further discussion, let's move to a vote.
Are we doing voice vote or roll call?
So what are you gonna, what do you want to do?
You know, I, I think, uh, this is to a voice vote. That's what we've talked about. If we are unclear what the outcome is, then we can do a roll call vote if necessary. So all those, do you usually say it, or do I say it?
No, it's you.
All right, so all those in favor, uh, Ms. Pruitt, uh, as the council president, um, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? Aye.
Nay.
Okay, so we've got I think it's really close. I think it would be beneficial in this case to do a roll call vote.
Yes.
Okay, council member Keller?
No.
Council member Happy?
No.
Council member Seager?
Nay.
Council member Pruitt?
Yes.
Council member Bump?
Yes.
Council member Emerald Baker?
No.
Mayor Wood?
Yes.
And the motion fails, order three.
So does he officially pass it back now, or we don't know yet?
You need another.
Okay, I nominate Pete Happy for council president.
Okay, can I just, can I interrupt for a second and ask if you're moving?
Oh, I will.
Nominate him, or are you nominating?
I will nominate him.
I, I just think that it's, since that motion is done, I really think we should move the presiding officer back to our mayor, um, so.
Okay.
Before we have another motion.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, you have a motion for Pete Happy to be council president. Second or no?
I'll second that.
All in favor, or is there any discussion? No, all, what, your role are all in favor?
As a given the expected outcome, I would vote, um, just do roll call vote.
Yeah.
Cause.
Yeah.
Council member Pruitt?
No.
Council member Emerald Baker?
Yes.
Council member Seager?
Yes.
Council member Keller?
Yes.
Council member Bump?
No.
Council member Happy?
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
No.
All right, so that Pete Happy is the council president. Do we have to say my what, or no?
Yeah, motion passes.
All right. Let's approve resolution number fifteen fourteen to check sign or authorization.
All right, uh, with the twenty twenty four election, we have a new mayor and new counselors that will require a change in the names of those elected officials authorized to sign checks on behalf of the city. Staying consistent with current practice, it is recommended that the entire council be authorized to sign checks. City staff will be in touch to obtain council signatures, which I think most of you have already done. Uh, signature cards for the bank once the city council acts. Uh, options are to approve resolution fifteen fourteen presented, take no action, or take any other action as desired. Um, I will note this has the same, um, I don't know, stipulation process where the first call is the mayor, second call is council president, and then seniority after that.
I have a question. Are we have questions?
I think we have.
We have a motion first, yeah.
No, I have a clarifying question.
Okay.
Is the list seniority?
Um, no, I don't think, you didn't write the list in seniority order, did you?
Uh, no, let's see, let's see. No, I didn't put it in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, cause Denise would be above Eric. Or, um, Bernard if it was, but yeah.
Yes.
I move to approve resolution number fifteen fourteen on ready. City staff members and city councilors to sign checks for the city of Cassidy blocks and appeal resolution number fourteen eighty-four.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
All right.
I find it, um, it makes it more difficult for staff to get checks signed if they have to go through a certain list. It is important when the checks are done that they get signed and mailed out. If they have to go through this list before they can get somebody to sign it, it could be two, three days. So I think this is not the best option to do. Let the staff member, who is usually Kathy who does AP, find out who can be there. I mean, it, a lot of us work, not me, but a lot of you work, and it's just not feasible. It really holds them up.
Any other discussion, Happy?
And I think that makes a lot of sense. I, I don't, i- is there a time limit? I, how long do you have to wait? I mean, it says it's written here. It seems like you have to go in order. But is there a period at which time you're like, I've got to move on?
There has been times where we've had to move on. It is a it's a hassle, and it, it could be a real problem.
Right, and isn't that the reason why in the past, uh, we've had some late fees on things because we can get the checks signed in time?
Uh, no, that wouldn't be why. It'd be bills weren't turned in and, or the dates, the checks were ran, didn't.
Yep.
Or, and there's been times when people don't invoice us, and you know, will fight to get the feedback, but we have discovered that we haven't been invoiced also.
Bernard has his hand up.
Bernard?
Thank you. Yes, I, I support Councilmember Bump's proposal there. My only my only, I guess, uh, requ- uh, 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 point, I guess additional note is I want to, want to make sure the auditor is okay with such a, a, a setup, you know? If it needs to be reviewed by the auditor that we're, we're pre-designating someone, we're not necessarily following this mayor or senior I want them to, to give the, the stamp of approval to that. If they give the approval, let's do what Councilmember Bump is proposing.
Denise?
Thank you. I, I don't see any time limit here. Personally, I value the position of the mayor as first call, but I don't know that, am I wrong in saying that whomever is asking for signatures, presumably, um, Kathy Wusley would say Brenda, you available? She's like, no, next call. Pete, you available? Next call. Pete, you know, is that, am I wrong in presuming that? I don't see a time that you have to wait.
Well, in, in circumstances where the counselor or mayor does not answer, and we cannot get a response, do we have authorization to automatically go down the list? That's where we've gotten hung up. Not that it's really caused major issues, but it's like, okay, now we're waiting.
Well, I would then add then a time like to say, um, I need to hear from you in ten minutes, uh, you know, and then keep going, or five minutes. I don't, I personally say go down the list, but but I think someone has an opinion.
Well, okay. Yeah, I do have an opinion that sometimes we cut the checks and they have to go in the mail either that day or the next day. We have to give them seven to ten days for mailing. And if we can't get them signed, then that relinquishes that time. As far as the auditors are concerned, we used to do this and the auditors didn't care because you have the city administrator signing it and a sta- and a, and a, uh, council member. And if Gordon, excuse me, I'm sorry, Gordon, Gordon is not available, then you've got other people that can do it. But to hinder this, because we want this person first, this person second, I'm sorry, that makes no sense to me. It just, it just delays it.
Go ahead, Eric.
Sorry, I live in a world that helps students to understand where do you draw the line? And so to me, the struggle that we have with this council is not defining specifics. And so how do you say that? The person closest geographically, that, like, how do we write that into so that there are no ambiguities, that the, the rule is the rule and we follow the rule because the rule is written clearly and concisely?
A counselor.
You have a counselor signs the, the checks.
I, I, so, sorry.
No, that's fine. Go ahead, go ahead.
So how do we define that?
But I, I.
I don't, I don't follow this.
Is the concern that and I'm, I'm making assumptions here, so I apologize, but I believe Mary Ann, Brenda, Tiffany, Denise, for the most part, are, don't have jobs. You two gentlemen have full-time jobs, so. Well, you, I mean, you're you're not a nine to five at a desk, can't come in here. You come in quite often. I mean, E- Eric, I think you've signed checks once in the last two years. Is that your concern? Twice. Is that every counselor gets a fair rotation of looking at the checks and signing them? Is that a concern, or you're just worried about the process?
The process.
Okay.
I could care less who signs it.
Okay.
I just want to like, I don't want it willy-nilly that we just call somebody and then we go. Like, I, I, I like process. And I'm probably only going to be able to do it in the summer, so that's fine. I get that, but the process.
So at, adding, you know, fifteen minute response time?
Yeah, that's.
I mean.
I was just gonna say, I think it's unduly burdensome as well. I think that it's, there's two check centers on there for, uh, a reason. To your point, it needs to be clearly outlined. I, I think I saw I'd like to hear, I think of this, the, oh, that we just change, I wish to, and counselor, uh, that's what I thought.
Go ahead.
Yep.
Could, could I just add that the section two was added a couple of years ago and was never there before?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, naturally, when we're, when we're, we we cut the checks and then, yes, we want them signed right now so that, because there's a process of finishing up those checks before we even get them to the mail. So there's still work to do. So I have been on the phone and had to call three people. And I should not I, I don't feel that staff should have to waste even thirty minutes calling people to try to find somebody to sign a check when I will tell you, yes, we use Butch Miller ninety-nine percent of the time because he was two minutes away. And every time we called him, he was there. I mean, unless he was out of town or something, but, you know, we, we would know. I mean, in this particular thing, we, we might find out that hey, Counselor Pruitt is always available. Counselor Bump is always available, that they can be here in two minutes. That's what we're gonna call.
Denise?
I like that, and I still think it's, it, it shows in before the office of mayor to, I don't know if you're not that available, to call the mayor first, but mayor and then a council. But I, I'll defer to what this body wants.
Happy? Um, Mr. Seager's got his hand up too, so I'll be brief, but I just want to say that every time I've signed checks, it's always educational. You know, I, I do agree with your point that I think that the first mayor's available. I think that it's really informative to sign the checks and see where the money's going.
Uh, Seager?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that Councilmember, Councilmember Bump was, make your comments. It looked like she was looking at me like I'm in disagreement. I'm not in disagreement. I'm very much in agreement with what you're proposing. I don't know if you were thinking, why doesn't he understand this? I do understand it, and I'm in agreement. Um, I guess my question to Councilmember Keller is like, is it just changing one word to say counselor? Is that, is that all you need to to, to create a sufficient process in your mind? Is, is that, I, I, I'm not sure what you think would solve this process issue. It's not clear to me.
I guess I just I don't know. I so many times I have sat here and listened to people say we don't follow the rules. So I want a rule written that is specific, and if that's what the council wants to go for, I, that's fine. I mean, that makes sense. I'm
I want to say something. Um, in regards to that, uh, the own I had thought to leave it that way because past administration changed it, put it in section two. And we did it that way for a couple of years, and as far as, I never heard of any problems. I know I'm quite available, um, but I wouldn't expect people to wait thirty minutes or anything, like you call and then you don't get an answer, go to the next person. I wouldn't even wait, but I'm not opposed to either way. But I do think that people, uh, countless council needs to know what they're signing and all that only because of the audit problems and all that. So we're aware of where this money is going because we do have a responsibility for that. And that we're not just coming in here rushing and signing, and that we're actually paying attention to what you're signing and what documents and all that. So that's my whole reason behind it saying, and it's very clear what that says. Happy?
And I would just want to comment to your point, Spock, that, you know, i- i- the way this is written right now, the first person's gonna ca- gonna call us would, and you know that you're responsible, uh, and the second person's gonna get a call, it'd be me, and I think every time the, the city's reached out to me, I've gotten right back to you right away. So I don't feel like this is necessarily slow things down too much, because I think we're committed to being responsive to the needs of the city. And I agree with Baker's comment that the mayor needs to be involved, and I really appreciate this informative and educational and eye-opening to sign the checks and see where the money's going, um, but I also hear your point.
I have no problem with the mayor signing, or any of you guys signing. The point is, when you put seniority in there, that's gonna hold everything up. Leave, leave that to Kathy. Okay, Brenda's gonna be called first. Now if Brenda's called and, and she's not available, Kathy's gonna pick another one. Does she have to go to seniority? Can't she just pick another counselor? Cause if you go seniority, Mr. Keller's gonna be working. She might be working. Now we're back into a half hour to forty-five minute delay. Just saying.
And we do have a motion and a second on the floor, correct?
I think.
Fifteen fourteen. Will we get the motion?
Uh, I made a motion. Next second.
Yep.
Yeah. So are, are you gonna change your motion about section two?
If that's what council would like, yes, second, I'm happy to do that.
Can I often threaten the amendment, are you speaking? That we keep such a new mayor, council president, uh, or we can get rid of council president if you want, and then council members, get rid of seniority. I do remember during my tenure as a council member that it was added, um, the seniority because it was important to a council member at that time. So if it's not important to a council member at this time, then we can strike it.
So whatever one it is.
I'm kind of curious where everybody feels about the striking section two, and then all of them, just bump sound point, just leave it in the hands of, uh, of Ms. Wusley, that may get the.
Well, it would be whoever is doing AP. I don't think she'd use.
Well, yeah, I don't know who does AP now.
It'll probably be the finance clerk, the new, new position we're hiring.
But I do know that you do it, Romeo.
I vote to strike it, or that's my input.
So we have a motion, or you, you wanna redo your motion, or?
Vote on it and see if it goes down.
Right, I'm, I'm, uh, let's make a probably amendment to move to approve resolution number fifteen fourteen, um, after removing section two, uh, which is the succession of authority for counselors to sign these checks, um, which will authorize the civic staff members and city counselors to sign checks for the city of Cassidy blocks and appeal resolution number forty-four. Oh, I'll second.
All right. No discussion. Now it's open for discussion for that way.
Bye.
Are we going to break to the
Thank you. I personally like that an elected official is a part of the process. So I don't want it to just be Tuesday. Is that what you're suggesting?
No.
No.
And the council has to sign.
Right, okay. And I, I again say a mayor and ten city counselors. I just really want it to be a mayor responsibility if the mayor's in.
Any more discussion? All right, all in favor of Happy's motion to approve resolution number fifteen fourteen, the striking. Favor of Kathy's motion to approve resolution number fifteen fourteen, the striking section two out. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose.
Nay.
Nay.
And it has passed. Resolution number fifteen fourteen with section two striking out. First plan of action for the. Financial twenty one, twenty two audit deficiencies.
All right, the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two audit was completed and submitted to the Secretary of State Audit Division. On January second, twenty twenty five, per the email sent to council on January second, a plan of action to address the deficiencies. Found by the auditors needs to be approved and submitted to the state by January thirtieth. Now CFO and city staff. Develop the attached plan of action for council review and approval and submission to the secretary Secretary of State Audit Division. Council option to approve the plan as presented, amend and approve the plan of action, do not approve the action. Um, we do have a deadline of the thirty days to submit the plan now.
I move to approve the plan of action to address the fiscal year twenty one, twenty two audit deficiencies.
Any discussion there? I think on page two of this.
Oh, yes.
With the signatures under plan of action. An updated account payable policy was written. Um, I spoke to. All right, sent an email.
Yes, yeah.
And that plan is not written. It's currently being written. And this needs to state that it's being written and not written yet.
Yes.
Because you don't have you don't have the document to read in front of you before you sign this document.
Yeah, I forgot to mention that. Thank you.
Well, it needs to be to change that wording to. Is being is currently being written? I don't know. Will be written.
Okay.
Yeah, will be.
You're on the second page, plan of action.
In the middle.
Fourth line down in the middle. Was should change to will be.
And updated account payable policy was written.
Okay.
It's not what.
I I missed that.
And it will be. Excuse me, it will be written before we sign? No.
No, this need to be approved now. But we are telling the state that we will have essentially new staff and a new policy in place by July one.
That's when it's done and it needs to state that it's being done. So are you able to update this?
Correct, yeah, it's just a typo error. It's not a substantial change to the. To the plan.
We fix it.
Oh, yeah.
I look to approve the plan of acting to address the fiscal year twenty one, twenty two audit deficiencies with the stated. Dramatical correction.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose. Pose. Oh, all right. It passes the plan of action for the audit planning's fiscal year from one twenty two with the. Language corrected. All right. Now approve sheriff service settlement agreement with the river county.
All right, a lot of this will be a recap again. Uh, the county first reach out to the city in March of twenty twenty four regarding underpayments of sheriff's contract. Contract dating back to fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. A chart is below. Uh, the county had been underbilling the city for nearly five years. The monthly amount billed out. Was not updated to match the annual agreed upon amount. The county initially wanted the entire funds paid. I met with city attorney Cleveland. About the matter, I asked if the city had any responsibility to pay the back due amount. He stated the city could have an argument about not paying the back due amount. He cautioned about the repercussions and our long term relationship with the county. We decided it was best to work with the county to find a good resolution for both parties. I met with county administrator Williams in July twenty twenty four. To discuss the matter, we determined the proposal. Proposed increase for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Was not presented to the city by the April first deadline and the amount owed was not valid. We also determined that both sides had missed opportunities to notice and correct the error. Over a handful of meetings, emails and phone calls, we came to a verbal agreement for the city to pay only fifty percent of the un. Unpaid fees over a tier year period to ease the burden on our budget. City Attorney Cleveland has reviewed and approved the agreement. Administrator Williams obtained approval from the county commission on the reduced amount at their December sixteenth meeting. As city administrator, I deemed this an administrative matter until council needed to be involved. The city and county staff were. Uh, able to successfully get an agreement that kept our. Relationship with the county in good standing and minimize the burden. A copy of the agreement is attached for review and approval. Council options are to approve the settlement, request amendments to the settlement, not approve the settlement. Um, I will note that any any requests um to amend the settlement will need to go back to the county for their approval.
Next question.
Yeah.
What's the consequence of not approving?
That's a good question. I. Never really had that discussion. Um, it county might take legal action. So they've mentioned it, but. I don't think they don't. They don't want to go that direction, but I think it is an option for them.
What? Legal responsibility do we have?
To pay it?
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, it was. It it's a really. Funky contract and what is operated is essentially the county administrator emailed the city administrator. Here's the new amount for next year. It was never in an official amendment like we did with Jacobs. It was very informal, so I. Honestly, I don't know how much that would stand up in court. I have. No idea.
You're gonna have a motion.
I was gonna say, I wanna ask a question, but I guess the better way, no.
Well, wasn't that not inappropriate?
No, you were good here. I think you were just saying to clarify.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have discussion, we're gonna have a motion.
Yeah, I guess it depends on how far the county wants to take it, which could result in legal action.
Clarifying question.
Okay.
So if the county. Went to in pursuit legal options, then we would. Be responsible for paying attorney Cleveland.
Yes.
That at his feet.
Yep.
Or whatever.
Yep.
So ultimately, we could. I mean, is it feasible? We could spend more?
Oh, yes, and and if we end up having to pay the county's legal fees as well.
Okay. You good? Okay.
I move to approve the sheriff's services. I don't want to bring up the county.
I'm looking to approve the contract with, uh, Pin River. County Sheriff. And it was seconded by Hapery. Any discussion? Both.
When this occurred. Did the bills that they sent make the changes or were they billing us for the same amount? Over and over and over again?
They billed us for the same amount every month for almost five years.
So in reality, we paid what they billed us.
Correct, correct.
It was them that didn't send it in a official manner.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I needed to know.
Yep.
Yeah, I was gonna say, when reviewing the contract to the sheriff's department, it seems like we've done, we upheld our side of the.
Yes.
We paid one who's invoiced uh within timeframe agreed, so I think that it's, uh. I appreciate a relationship with the sheriff's department. I also recognize that there could be significant legal costs to defend that position, and I think that. In interest of goodwill, I believe that our city administrator did a fantastic job of negotiating a settlement that was really the best interest of both parties and. You know, we really do have uh invested interest in supporting the sheriff's department and all of the services they provide, and they're in a financial hardship right now. Um, we agreed to those increases. They didn't bill us the right one in the spirit of the agreement, though I think that makes. This is a good settlement.
Denise, thank you. I I. Shared in the last meeting that I am unhappy. We are having to foot the bill for something when we thought we paid what we were supposed to, and yet I appreciate. Your agreement, the goodwill and the lack of a lawsuit. Um. But on that note, can we use this time to continue to ask? The sheriff's department to. When they do submit their bill to submit ours as well because we did one month just to. Pay money back because they did not submit ours. And is there, is it too late to write in the agreement? Um, should you underfill us again? Dear, we're not paying us to.
Yeah, that that I would say that's out of the scope of this agreement, and then in terms of the hours per month, they do send us a monthly report. It's not on the invoice. But we get the monthly report with the case numbers and 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 callouts, so.
Okay, but I I it creates homework for our staff. They don't just say. You know, isn't it twenty hours a week?
Twenty four.
Twenty four a week? So they say. I mean, is it easy for you to see to add up those hours?
Oh, yeah, the the reports got number. I divide it by the number of days in the month and.
Oh, I'd like to see that picture.
It's in your package.
It's in your packet.
Right, okay, but I I guess I'll none. I'll add them up. Just would be nice to know. Okay.
Seeger?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to also advocate in support of this. This motion. As someone who's had been in a pickle and different scenarios. Trying to balance the relationship with the the specific issue at hand is always a challenge. I think it's a a very impressive what the city administrator has done here. Uh, it's a very reasonable, as as I mentioned, I think in our in our workshop. We've got X thousand dollars worth of service for half price off. And. It's not just the sheriff's office, the entire county. We work with the county on roads. And FEMA, and there's so many different things that we need a good relationship. For us to direct this and then and then make them do something, you know, you know. More more extreme, I think would not be in our our good best interest, so I'm very much supporting this this motion.
In in this particular. Um, instance, have you and the sheriff agrees that every year? That you will sign a document? And not just an email? How's that? Has that been? Talked about so that we know. That you've got the numbers?
Um, I'm trying to remember.
Do that?
I'm I. I wanna say there was written notification. But I think how that was specified, I'd I'd have to double check.
Because if it's email and we go through different city administrators, whatever, it's gonna get lost again.
Yep. Yeah, digging up those emails from Gordon and Jeff, who was Allison's predecessor was a pain.
So I'm wondering if it can be done in writing so that we have a file on that, so this doesn't happen again.
I can request amendment to the contract.
Well, do we re-sign the contract every year or does it go?
It's an evergreen. It auto.
It's automatic?
Yep.
So in that automatic, it should say that every year at such and such a time, this county will send us a letter. Is that gonna be what? You're gonna do?
Yes, yeah, like a written a written notification.
I just wanna make sure we get written.
Yes.
Notification so this doesn't happen again.
Says notify in writing of the amount of the increase for the next fifteen years.
Oh, thank you.
First.
Thank you. Okay, it's there.
Oh, yes, but it doesn't specify what in writing is.
No, doesn't. Is right in writing an email, in writing a?
Yep.
A a text? Yeah, I don't know.
Yep. I'll double check the the actual. Verbiage of the contract we sign. I'll double check and make sure there's something in there.
Any of you back to us on that?
Yeah, I'll double check, yep.
That's so, uh, I I appreciate that, um, you were able to negotiate this, but I uh didn't appreciate finding out about it online publicly. Um, so I hope that in the future that I will, I will be more conducted date on credit issues. And, um, because I sat in a lot of council votes and I didn't really hear anything about this. Um, but I think that we need to honor, I don't wanna be known as the town that just pays bills, so. Uh, I I think we need to pay this amount, but then I'm also curious, I we, I guess I know we were behind on paying this year on this year's contract. Are we? Up to date?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, that was another issue where they they mail us the invoices and they didn't mail them for two months. Like, oh, you're behind. Well, yeah, because we never got the invoices.
And did?
I.
Did they explain why they didn't mail them? I mean. If this is on their.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If this is on their problem, that's not ours. Um. I just think they need to be responsible for some of this too. Okay, I'll quit now.
All right. So we've got a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the sheriff's settlement agreement with the river county. Say aye.
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 And you say may? Well, passes for the effort, the sheriff's service settlement agreement with the river county. All right, committee appointments. We have Courtney, who has applied for budget and planning. And we have another openings that we can join. I think a month before from Courtney. I am in. To budget and. Planning commission to whatever longer position, whatever longer time is. You know, position is available.
One second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? All right, okay, you are on budget and planning. Your budget term will end twelve thirty one, twenty seven. And your planning term will end twelve thirty one, twenty twenty eight.
You'll get official written notice here in the next couple of days.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Committee reports.
Nope.
Water and wastewater rates.
All right, at the July twenty second, twenty twenty four council. Me at the twenty twenty four meeting, council approved hiring Trilogy LLC to complete an analysis. And recommended changes to our water and wastewater rates. Trilogy LLC is present tonight to discuss their finance recommendations. Attached for review our current rates and trilogy trilogies, analysis and recommendations. Uh, Eric and uh Christie, thank you so much for your your patience. They are actually based out of Wisconsin, or is it Minnesota? Anyways, it's way past your bedtime.
This is not the latest. I have been at a meeting, so it's all good.
Good to know. So take it away.
All right, yes, so I'm I'm Christie DeMaster with Trilogy, and um we also have our other partner Eric Granum um on on the meeting tonight. Um, and yes, we are based in Wisconsin. Um. Majority of our clients are in the Midwest, but we've also worked in Maryland and California and now Oregon on water and wastewater rate issues. Um, I've been doing this for about twenty eight years and Eric for coming up on eighteen years. Um. And we worked together at another company prior to starting Trilogy in twenty eleven. Um. So, um, I do have a kind of a brief presentation to hit the highlights of the rate study. If I can share my screen. With that setup to do so.
Should be able to.
Okay. All right, can you see my screen now?
It's loading. There we go.
Um, and. See if I can do, uh, the presentation view here. There we go. Okay, can you see a full screen version of it now?
Yep.
Okay, hopefully I can get this to advance. All right, um, so I'm gonna just hit. Kind of the overview of our recommendations and then get into a little bit of the um kind of financial outlook for each of the utilities and then. I'm happy to take any questions you may have um after that. So did that screen advance for you?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so, um, in terms of just overall recommendations, I will say the both utilities are in sound financial position. Um, um, for the water utility, we are not recommending any overall rate increase. Your your revenues are adequate right now. Um, but we are recommending adjusting some of the individual rate components um up or down to reflect. The the utilities costs, and so just in general terms. Um, the fixed debt service charges are generating a little bit more revenue than is needed right now, and the um usage and base. Charges which are used to fund operation and maintenance expenses are generating a little bit less than than they should be, so. Uh, we'll get to some of the details of that in a later slide. Um, for the sewer utility, we're recommending a nine point seven percent overall increase in revenues, um, so that would generate about sixty thousand more per year in revenues. Um. And really, that's primarily being driven by the recent wastewater system improvement projects and the um increasing debt that's gonna be coming online. Um, so again, we're recommending, um. Adjustments to all of the rates. Um, some of them would be a little bit more of an increase than others, and we'll get to that in a later. Slide when we talk about the actual specifics. Um, and so we've been spending some time over the last few months, um, working with Jordan to really take a deep dive into. All of your recent year's sales, customer numbers, revenues, expenses, debt service. Capital outlay and reserves, and so that's all reflected in what we're um projecting and recommending. Okay. Oops, all right, and then this slide just shows, um, a comparison of where your um rates are at right now. Oops. All right, and then this slide just shows um, a comparison of where your um, rates are at right now for your typical residential customer and what those would look look like with the recommended rate increases. Um, so as you can see, you're a little bit lower than average currently. Um, that thirteen oh six fifty-six per year um, for a typical residential customer is includes all the charges for sewer and water. Um, so that's about a hundred and nine dollars per month currently. Um, with the recommended rate adjustments, that would increase to about a hundred and seventeen dollars per month. So um, about an eight dollar per month impact for your typical residential customer. Or seven percent overall when you look at both of the the sewer and water utility bills. Um, just quickly, there's kind of three steps in the rate setting process. So um, first is to look at the overall amount of revenue that you need, which is what we could refer to as the revenue requirement. Um, and we base that on your cash flow needs. Um, then we do a cost of service study where we figure out out of that total amount of revenue, how much of that is appropriate to recover from each of the rate components? And then lastly, we do um, calculate what the rates would would need to be based on your customer base and sales. So we're really going to focus mainly on that revenue requirement and also rate design. Um, and not talk really too much about the cost of service because that's kind of an underlying, you know, behind the scenes kind of a kind of a process. Um, but it is covered in the study. Um, and then in terms of what we look at for revenue requirements, this is pretty pretty standard. Um, obviously you need to cover your operation and maintenance expenses. Um, your annual debt service needs. Um, we included some contributions to capital reserve funds and I'll get into what those look like. And then lastly, just um, we do have a ten-year cash flow forecast in the rate study. Um, but the rates were really designed for a what we call a test year, which um, in your case is the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. Uh, so then getting into the specifics for each utility just a little bit here. Um, your water utility is in in good shape financially. Um, your combined water fund balances were about one point one three million at the um, end of fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And that is the water fund covers operation and maintenance and debt service. Um, and then there's a separate capital reserve fund. And and within that, there's there's some additional um, specific capital reserve funds. So this is just, we're talking just about the water fund right now. Um, with keeping the overall revenues the same, we're we're projecting a little bit of positive cash flow, um, which will build up that balance a little bit over the years based on the assumptions we built into the study. Um, we do, we did look at a very basic kind of rule of thumb, recommended minimum reserve level for a utility of your size with your customer base and the amount of debt service and assets that you have. Um, so we're looking at about four hundred thousand as kind of that baseline level. Um, so that includes three months of operation and maintenance expenses. Um, an amount equal to your annual debt service and then um, your annual depreciation um, expense is kind of like a emergency capital type fund. Um, you're even with the recent projects that you've done, um, the utility still has about fifty percent debt to equity ratio. So we looked at the amount of outstanding debt you have compared to the value of all of your assets, both infrastructure and um, cash reserves. So that's that's a reasonable, healthy level. You know, your your utility is not overburdened with debt currently. Um, and that will start to pay down over the next um, several years. Um, no major capital projects on the horizon. Um, with the deposits to capital reserves that I mentioned, um, you know, between now and the next ten years, um, you're going to have about a million dollars available for any other capital projects that may come up, vehicle replacements, repairs, things like that. Um, this shows kind of a snapshot for the twenty-five, twenty-six um, year. Um, so about fifty-one percent of the overall revenue requirement is for ongoing operation and maintenance. Um, about a hundred and forty-two thousand per year for debt service. So that's twenty-seven percent roughly. Um, and then then another twenty-two percent for capital. Um, either miscellaneous capital um, projects that come up or deposits to the reserve fund. Um, so you've got within those deposits to the reserve fund, there's some money going to a meter maintenance fund, some going to a hydrant maintenance fund. Um, some going to a general capital reserve, and then we've also got ten thousand built in there for really my, you know, minor kind of incidental capital outlay that might come up. Nope, sorry. Um, so in terms of the rate adjustments for the water utility, um, we're proposing to leave the meter maintenance um, charge um, at the current levels, the fire flow charge at the current levels. Um, reduce the monthly fixed charges for the corrosion control project debt service and the um, waste, the water system improvements debt service. Um, so in total, that that fixed charge would come down for a for a typical residential meter from thirty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents down to twenty-seven dollars and eighteen cents. And then the usage charge based on water volume would go up from two fifty um, per thousand gallons to three seventy-two per thousand gallons.
Christie, um, this is page sixteen in the report, correct?
Um, I don't, I can't easily switch over to that. Um, Eric, do you have that open?
Just I counsel's flipping through paperwork, so I figured I'd.
Okay.
That's what I have is sixteen.
Okay, just wanted to confirm.
Uh, yes, that's sixteen.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so this is, this is what we're recommending for rates that would keep the overall revenue the same, but kind of adjust things to better match um, the costs that are driving these. So this chart shows a couple of things on kind of one chart. So the um, the stacked bar columns are those reserve funds in the water fund. So the orange is kind of your general operating reserve. Um, the green is the fund that that holds funds for the debt service on the water system improvement projects. And then the blue is the corrosion control project debt service fund. Um, so this is just showing those are projected to grow a little bit with some positive cash flow. Um, and then those annual contributions to the capital reserves are reflected in the the increase in this red line here. That's that's the other, the meter maintenance, the fire hydrant maintenance, the general capital reserves. Um, then moving on to the sewer utility. Um, the sewer utility is also in good financial shape, but does have some more debt service coming online. So um, that's why we're recommending a bit of an increase there. Um, reserve levels were very healthy again at the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And and again, I'm I'm really looking at the the reserve funds within the sewer utility itself, which is separate from the capital reserves. Um, over the next ten years, um, there's some contributions going from the water fund to the capital reserve fund. So that's going to draw down the water fund balance just a little bit, but also increase the the capital reserve. So it's kind of a a a net neutral in terms of total amount of funds available for the wastewater um, utility and its and its assets. Um, again, similarly to the water, we looked at kind of a recommended minimum balance. Um, and for the wastewater utility, that's about six hundred and fifty thousand in reserves. Um, so you're well above that. Um, the um, wastewater debt is only about twenty-one percent of the total equity in the wastewater utility. So that's still pretty low, even though you just recently issued um, substantial amounts of debt. And then on the wastewater side, you're looking at having about eight hundred thousand dollars available in the capital reserve funds over the next ten years for other um, expenditures that may come up. And then snapshot picture on the wastewater utility. Um, on this side, there's a larger percentage of the revenues are needed for O and M expenses. A little bit less for debt service and a little bit less available for capital as compared to the water. And this shows the recommended changes in the rate structure. Um, so starting with the fixed charge that's going towards the debt service for the recent wastewater system improvement projects. Um, recommending that increase a little bit, um, a little bit more than the other charges. That's about a twelve percent increase for your typical residential customer. Um, and then a ten percent increase in that fixed minimum charge for users who use up to ten thousand gallons per month. Um, then a six percent increase in the um, volumetric rate for customers that use more than ten thousand. Um, and then again, on the, this is looking at this, the wastewater funds in the stacked columns here. So the orange is the operating reserve. The green is the um, debt service fund for the wastewater system improvement projects. And then this um, red line here is for capital reserves for um, short-lived asset replacements. Um, so you're seeing we're gonna with with the um, nine point seven four four percent rate increase drawing down the operating reserve just a little bit. Um, still keeping it very healthy um, and setting aside some funds in the capital reserve. And so just to reiterate, um, not recommending any overall rate increase for the water utility and about nine point seven four percent for the sewer utility for twenty-five and twenty fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, and I I just want to mention too, our cash flow forecasts at this point, the ten-year forecast are not showing that you um, that we're not projecting that you're going to need additional rate increases during that timeframe. But I just want to say that with a caveat that, you know, that's based on a lot of assumptions that we built into the study. Um, a couple of key assumptions are no major changes in customer sales. Um, a two percent inflation on all of your operating and maintenance expenses. Um, with the exception of the sewer treatment operations contract, which we built in a four percent per year um, annual increase in that. And so, you know, I just want to say we don't, we don't say, we're not recommending make a rate increase for next year and then leave everything set for ten years. We would still recommend that you continue to take a look at this um, every year and you know, maybe do a more thorough checkup within a few years to see where you're at relative to the um, the projections. So. And that uh, concludes the presentation, but happy to take any questions.
Yes, my questions are related to the the assumptions. Uh, two percent inflation and operations maintenance for the water, two percent inflation in the sewer treatment operating contract. What were those numbers based off of? Because it seems like historically we've seen significant increase in our contract for operations and maintenance of the uh, sewer treatment plan. Uh, and I wasn't sure about the two percent inflation operations maintenance for the water.
Yeah, I mean, the most recent increase in the operations contract was four percent. So that's the basis for that. Um, and like I said, if that if that does change, then that could change the it doesn't change the recommendations for next year, but it does, it could impact, you know, as you get a little bit further down the line. Um, where that might look at. Eric, I don't know if Eric, do you have anything to add about the the two percent inflation in O and M? I know it's been very vol- volatile the last few years. Um, so it is a little difficult right now um, to identify whether that's going to come back down or or continue to fluctuate, so.
Thanks. Is that really accurate though, Mr. Bennett? I thought we've seen our our contract for the operation of sewer plant go up.
It it has, it's probably gone up thirty-ish percent in the last five years. I think this most recent one wasn't as high as the past couple. Um, but it has spiked quite a bit since COVID essentially. So, but I don't know the exact numbers.
But you were only, when you were facing these assumptions, it was only the past twelve months, you didn't look at the aggregate of the last, you know, four or five years?
Well, that's already been, that's built into kind of where it is right now. Um, no, we did not, you know, yeah, we looked at the kind of the the most recent increase to to uh, project going forward, but yeah, I don't we wouldn't be projecting, let's say, a thirty percent increase over the next five years unless there's, you know, a good reason to. Um, so but as far as the current costs, they are reflected in our in our projections.
I don't think it'd be harsh. I I really think that you guys have done a lot of great work. Now, just one thing that comes up to me because I think it's been highly for both of us that have been on the budget committee to look at the increase in operations and maintenance of uh, wastewater treatment plant and and then also the fines that we're paying. So we're paying more for the services, but we're still paying fines. Um, so that's been, I think, a frustration for some of us, me particularly. And we did just find out that our current provider, those services, has not renewed that contract.
Yep.
So I just see that as potentially being a a a a hurdle that we have to overcome.
Sure, and that's fair. And like I said, we're really focusing mainly on the twenty-five fiscal year, so um, yeah, it if we, like, if we were to know that you had a project that was coming online and you're going to have more debt service within a couple of years in addition to what's, you know, already already there, like, then we might reckon, might might recommend a stepped rate increase to cover a few years to to cover that. Um, but with with O and M expenses, since they do fluctuate and it can be a little difficult to predict where they're going from year to year, um, you know, we don't necessarily recommend a multi-year rate increase just to cover O and M. So that's why, you know, we we try to project a little bit of that in there, but then say, you know, also you do need to keep an eye on it annually.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Bernard, just guys, hand it.
Oh, Bernard, sorry.
No worries. Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, guys. So a few questions here. Let me pull my thing here. So, you know, the last city I worked for, we implemented a winter water average s- system for our sewer customers. And, you know, the basic idea being you 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 encourage conservation, you know, kind of on both ends of that ledger, you know, from a water perspective, also from a sewer perspective. Um, do you guys look at that? I mean, what what is your, what is your thought on the city adopting a winter water water average system for our sewer? As part of our sewer charges?
And yeah, we do see that quite quite a bit. Um, we've had a lot of conversations with a lot of utilities about that. Um, because, you know, and that's a fair point because your current rate structure, you know, anybody that uses up to ten thousand gallons in a month pays a flat charge, right? So that doesn't doesn't encourage conservation and and ten thousand gallons per water of water per month is a really generous amount.
Yes.
So that is something we certainly could look at changing if that was, you know, the, or at least look at what that might look like if if um, there's interest on that part. And and you know, we do have quite a bit of our budget left for the study, so that's um, you know, that we'd be happy to look at that. Um, if.
Yeah, is it your conclusion that's a more equitable rate system? Do you, do you have a professional opinion on that? That a winter wa- water average system versus flat fee?
Um, yeah, I mean, yeah, probably because, you know, within that ten thousand gallons, you probably have a pretty wide range of customers who some may be using only two thousand gallons a month and some may be using you know, nine thousand five hundred gallons per month, right? Um, so, yeah, it's definitely more equitable to to base it on actual usage and then have a a kind of a summer credit of some kind.
Yeah, I I will just add to that, um, you know, it's a lot easier to make that connection with uh, water rates versus the sewer. Um, and and in the adjustments we're making here, whereas we're uh, proposing to reduce the fixed charge and increase the the use charge does um, move toward incentivizing conservation of water. Um, so I would, I would add that. And then also, you know, it is, you know, based on the um, you know, review of the the regional communities um, in your area. It is quite common that um, the sewer is is just a flat fee. Um, which I was rather somewhat surprised that it was quite as common as it was. Um, we usually see at least some component of the sewer be based on the on the volume, yeah, which you do have some, but uh, yeah, it's, it was uh, surprising that so many communities um, did not, they just had the flat fee.
Okay. I've got a few more, Madam Mayor, if I could.
Yeah.
So next one was and this is kind of a finance question. Well, before I do that, so the scope of this, your your contract, was it to actually do a detailed analysis of the state of our capital? Am I, am I correct in understanding that? You had to make some broad assumptions that our our sewer lines or water lines were in X condition and there wasn't going to be any major repairs in the near, you know, near term. Is, am I understanding that right?
Yeah, I mean, we're not engineers, so um, yeah, we're we're looking at this purely from a rates and financial perspective and so um, you know, and we did talk with Jordan about this as far as, you know, is, are there known capital repairs and projects, like major projects on the horizon? Um, and so, you know, given that there wasn't anything that's known right now about that, um, we were more taking the approach of how much money are you going to be generating and have available for um, projects that may come up in the next ten years? And is that, you know, adequate relative to the size of your utilities?
I I did, sorry, I did give them the direction that both systems were essentially overhauled within the last five years. I mean, they're they're new systems.
Okay. So, and then with with regards to the those flat fees we we pay for the capital improvements we've recently completed. So in one case, that corrosion control project, you know, we're generating twenty-three thousand dollars, but the the debt service is sixteen. And then the water system improvement, you know, we're well above that, generating two thirty, but the debt service is one twenty-five. Look, when I, when I see numbers like that, I have two thoughts. The first thought is, well, heck, we've got that in place. Why don't we pay that debt down faster? And then reduce, you know, the interest, you know, uh, burden that we're paying on service, paying to services debt and save money that way. But the other. But the other thought I have is this idea of, you know, generational equity. You know, if you pay it down quicker than folks who are enjoying this infrastructure, they're not paying anything, right? A new guy moves to town, it's like, wow, this, this bill is so cheap, and then we just suffered through, you know, these higher payments. Do, do you have an opinion on, on that, you know, those two perspectives, like, should we be advocating for this basically a longer term, again, to spread that pain over multiple, uh, you know, uh, customer, you know, uh, sets? Instead of paying it down early and saving a little interest. And I don't know the nature of that, that debt, I'm like, how much interest we're paying, how, how, how high of a, uh, interest burden that is?
Yeah, no, you, you brought up the term that I was gonna bring up, which is intergenerational equity, which is, is exactly what, what you're talking about there. If you've got an asset that's gonna last for a long period of time, it is more, um, fair to all of your customers to, you know, spread the payment for that across as much as you can, um, kind of the life cycle of that asset, so that everybody that's getting some benefit from it is sharing the cost. So that, that's kind of where we lean with these, with these major projects like that, that that's the more fair approach to it. We did have some conversation about the fact that, you know, you've been collecting those debt service charges for a few years and have some, some decent balances in those funds. And, you know, do you have to keep those monies in there, or could you use that to lower the rate increase for people right now? Um, you know, kind of our, our thought on that is that those are some, there are some funds in there that could be used to pay off the debt a, a couple of years early at this point, so. Um, it's kind of a, kind of a balance between those things.
Right, if you were to really try and have a large impact of paying off that, that debt early, then we, we wouldn't be looking at no increase. We'd be looking at, you know, fairly substantial rate increases. And again, as, as we pointed out, that, that intergenerational equity is, would be, um, out of balance. Um, if we try to do that.
To put, and to put it in perspective, like I said in the presentation, that nine point seven four percent, um, increase for the sewer utility, that's about sixty thousand dollars of, of additional revenue, so that there would be, you know, it would have to be a pretty substantial increase to, to pay that down faster. Um, and on the water side, if you wanted to leave the debt service charges in place where they're at right now, like, you know, to generate that two hundred and, I think it's two hundred and thirty thousand for the, um, the water system improvement debt, then you'd be having to have increases, pretty substantial increases on kind of that base fixed charge and the usage charge to keep up with your operation and maintenance expenses.
Okay, let's see, I think I had one more. So, looking at those comparison cities, it looks like, you know, you picked a lot of cities in the gorge. Did, did, did you not look at like Troutdale or Wood Village just to our west? Is that? Cause I was kind of curious what they're paying. You know, when you say we're, we're at the median or below the median, obviously, if you get more data points, and that could change. Is there, is there, did any good data collected on, on communities to our west? And then let me just ask this, so, if you can pull up that regional, uh, table eleven, I look at Hood River, their water fix is forty-two. Ours is, with the, with the proposed, ours would be twenty-seven. Their sewer fix is sixty-seven, ours is sixty-seven. And we would be a little more on the volume water, but is that what's causing the difference in us being more expensive than Hood River? Just that fifty cents a, per, per thousand? Is that what's? Cause it seems like they got such a bigger fix fee that we would be, even if not them, be a little above us. It's, those numbers don't seem to, you know, pop out as being, uh, making, you know, truing up. Is that, you see what I'm asking?
Eric, are you doing some quick math over there?
I'm trying to do some quick math here, yes. Um, the average customer uses about six thousand gallons per month. So, I just, okay, that means.
So six times fifty cents times twelve months is basically the math there on the, the usage charges. And so that's about a thirty-six dollar per year difference, if I'm doing that correctly, on the usage charge, and then there's about a fifteen dollar per month difference on the, um.
Cause it's showing like thirty-five dollars a year more. Is that, is that the numbers you're, you're getting? Mr. Harris? And then I had one question on the assumptions. So, you know, we've got a forty-five unit housing construction project coming on, like, as we speak. And then there's another one planned, you know, just west of that. I mean, those are real customers. I mean, your, your, all your assumption said no, basically no growth in customers, but and I, you know, one of the reasons I got on council is to build more housing. I would like to get, see more housing in Cascade Locks. Uh, is that a, a fair assumption, given, you know, the housing needs of our city? And then, again, real plans that are in motion right now. Did you guys talk about that when you made those assumptions?
Yeah, I mean, um, that's something we could build into that ten-year forecast. Um, you know, if they're not currently customers, we don't necessarily want to build that into, um, the, you know, the rates for next year. But yeah, certainly that could impact where things go over the next ten years. It should, it, it will. It's, let's see, I'm trying to think now what the, the total number of customers is right now. So it's not a huge percentage increase in the number of customers. And it will depend on how much water they're using too, because on the, on the water side at least. So yeah, that will definitely impact the ten-year forecast.
Yeah. And then the last question, so, if I'm a single-family resident customer, I'm using six thousand gallons a month, what would my, if, if I just take that thirteen ninety-eight and divide it by twelve, that's what my bill looks like? Okay.
Right, yep. That's, yeah, like, if you're using six thousand gallons of water per month, and you've got a five-eighth inch meter, that's what we're looking at, yep.
So the, yeah, so right now, it's twelve divi- thirteen sixty-three divided by twelve gives your, your average monthly bill. And it's basically going up by like three bucks.
Uh, it should be about eight bucks. Uh, yeah, that's a hundred and seventeen. What I got for the thirteen ninety-eight, a hundred and seventeen per month versus a hundred and nine currently.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And I would, uh, I would just like a paper copy of the presentation.
Yeah.
It's like, uh, condensed version of what it says. Key points in it, so if I could get a printed copy of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I will, I'll send that to Jordan right away, so you can do that.
I was just gonna say, just digital copy, maybe for me is fine, um, saying this, people want to request a paper copy, just don't print them for me. I would love that.
Anybody else have any questions?
On the, um, the water and sewer loans, the debt service that we had, whenever that was done, that was done with the intention. And we started collecting money from customers like a couple of years in advance before the project was done. And that was done and told to the people that we would pay that loan off early. So that's why that's that way, and we should be doing that if that's what we told the people. You know, that we would pay it off early, because that was, that whole thing is to save a few years of interest. And that's why we started collecting it way before the project was ever to be funded or anything. That's all I have. Thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, for next steps on this, I mean, if, if any of you have any additional questions for them, I can send them to me, I'll email to them for more research. But it's, sounds like consensus to not change any debt service rates, but there might be more discussion on that. Does council want this as a discussion item at a future meeting, essentially? Where we have a one-page chart comparing our current rates to what they proposed and have a discussion from there? I mean, how does council want, council want to proceed? Cause I think the original intent was to actually have these in place by January one, but obviously that didn't happen. So I mean, is there a goal to get this in place?
It seemed like Mr. Seeger had some questions that we weren't able to really answer tonight, like specifically adjusting the bidding structure to encourage conservation and that, uh, presenters mentioned that they are under budget. We have money still available. Do we wanna, is there consensus from council to explore kind of different you know, rate structures? Um, or do we want to move forward with what you're proposing? I felt like there were some questions that Mr. Seeger brought up that we weren't able to really answer, but we have some funds to maybe dive into those a little bit deeper. Or do we want to save the money and use it for other things?
I, well, we saved the money for other things, cause I know our pipes and stuff, and you know, we might have a new treatment plant and rebuilt all that. We have a lot of pipes and stuff in town that we haven't done. So we're not setting as good as we think. We have a lot of leaks.
I'd be curious what your Mr. Seeger's input is. I really respect his opinion. I mean, he's pretty knowledgeable about this. I bet you guys have really good questions, so I'm just wondering what your thoughts are on that.
Well, it, it is a council conversation on whether we want to push our, our rate system in a more equitable manner. Someone who uses, like, as she used that example, someone who's using two thousand units of, of water is placing a smaller burden on our sewer system than someone using eight, nine thousand gallons of water on a regular basis. But the guy using two thousand is paying the same much as the guy paying nine thousand. If we're okay with that, then you don't need to change it. But that's why cities make those changes. They try to make folks who use more pay more and use less pay less. And we're, right now, we've got a very, um, it's a kind of one-size-fits-all rate structure when it comes to sewer. We're not catering to the, the, the specific user behavior of our different customers. So again, if, if we want to do that, then that's, that's something they could look into as far as proposed winter water average system, and then how that rate structure would, would go into place. If that's something the county, uh, the city values, I do value that. I don't think, I don't feel like someone using nine thousand should be paying the same amount as someone using two or even less, you know? And so I, I, I gravitate towards those types of rate systems, so we're more fair, you know? Folks who use a lot should pay more.
I want to go back to the statement made that we have, we have water leaks. Whoever made that statement.
I said it.
Okay, do we have a lot of water?
Not that I'm aware of. Yeah, we just scoped the system as part of the, both items and repaired all of the issues. I mean, more may have popped up in the last couple of years.
I, I've heard public works talk about it. It's not the main, cause we did the main road, main lines, but we haven't went to any of the sides, and I've heard them talk about leaks quite often. Now, they could have been fixed in the meantime, but I knew that we hadn't ever repaired them.
News to me.
Yeah. That people, as part of this.
Yeah, it'd be a good question for Sheldon, cause he definitely would know.
So to the, um, team, thank you for staying up so late. How long would it take? And are you clear on what, um, Councilman Seeger's asking for you to do? How long until we can look at that and discuss that? If it's something we wanted?
I would defer to Eric on this question, I think, more because he's looked more at the customer data part of this to, you know, determine what we, what we would be able to do with that. You're on mute, though.
Yeah, he knows.
Bottom left corner, I think. There you go.
Yeah, I mean, it, it will require some, some estimating on, on our parts, uh, because, you know, the data we have is what's, it's based on, you know, what you're currently charging, so. But I, but at, at the very least, yeah, like, um, probably if, when's your next meeting? But, you know, within a month, uh, we can, um, take a look at that and see, uh, just to see what, what it would even look like, what kind of impacts there would be, uh, even if it's, you know, somewhat of a, of an estimate. Yeah, I think we can come back in a, in a month and, and provide that.
I, I would also like to see what the impact is of the operations and maintenance of the wastewater treatment plant, like the change in contract.
Yeah.
And how that might affect our assumptions for.
Yeah, we probably won't have the full scope of that for at least a couple more months till we do an RFP and see what that response is, or if we end up bringing it in-house. I mean, that's two, three months away.
God, that's too far out.
Yeah, yep. I mean, unless, unless we're pushing this rate increase back to coincide with the new fiscal year, but I believe the goal was to get it in, initiated sooner than later.
But I, I do, and I, we give a little bit more look at the operation maintenance of the plant, but I feel like four percent is not adequate. Like, looking at historical data and what we've done in the last ten years, I, I just feel I'm afraid that if we make a, a cost of service adjustment on our sewer rates based on four percent, it's not gonna keep up with the increase in cost of operations.
Yeah, and I, I would fully expect the city would come back in three, four years at the most and do this study again. I mean, I would not wait ten years to do this again.
If, if I could clarify, are you concerned about the next fiscal year or just more of the long-term projections?
See, the immediate with this RFP and having somebody else operate, I have no idea what their number's gonna be. You know, the people that we've been using decided not to renew their contract because it was compliance issues with DEQ. But I think that, you know, those compliance issues may be related to the fact that they weren't charging enough to operate our system in a manner which was, you know, you know, consistent with the requirements of regulation. So my fear is that somebody else could say, well, in order to operate it correctly, it's gonna cost twice as much.
Yeah, but yeah, we won't, we won't know that answer for two months at the earliest.
So what is the negative of gathering more information before we make a rate increase discussion? What is the negative?
It just delays the rate increase.
So it impacts our budget for next year?
Not for next year, this year.
Okay, then. So I'm kind of in favor. It sounds like folks want more info. It's gonna take some time to gather that more info before we discuss this more. Is that right?
I feel like a big change happened just recently with this, you know, the people that are operating our plant saying, we don't want to do this anymore. So I'm kind of in favor of maybe pushing back the rate increase so that we can have a better determination of what the increased, uh, cost for operations and maintenance is going to be. Yeah, like we're spending a lot of money on the study and it's, you know, the study's only as good as the assumptions.
We wait and find out more?
Thank you. Yeah, so, look, when it comes to water, I feel like we have some very clear guidance on what those rates should look like, and I'm ready to talk about making those changes. I would recommend a workshop, cause it sounds like we might have some different opinions on whether we keep the, the twenty-dollar, you know, water system, uh, uh, improvement fee, or reduce it to eleven as suggested by this report, but we're not, we, there's no new, you know, widget we're throwing into that rate system. We've, we've got a good system, from my opinion. We just need to adjust a few things. And, uh, I think we should move forward with that. Let's do a workshop, agree on what those look like, and I think we could, we could implement that. But I agree, the sewer, we might need a little more. But I agree, the sewer, we might need a little more time, given the fact that we're gonna be changing. The operation solution for our sewer treatment plant. And we might want to consider doing a, a winter water average, you know, uh, rate sol- solution. So that's my two cents.
So.
That's fine.
A workshop on it? All right. On just the water or the sewer or?
Might as well do both.
We need a workshop on this?
Well, only because we have the discussion of whether or not to. Keep the, um, debt service where it's at or lower it and. Raise the rates or keep it as is and raise the rates. I, I think that we have that discussion that we need to have.
There's a lot of equitability questions I feel like we're wrestling with here about its intergenerational payback and a long-term asset. We've got the, the sewer rates of the two thousand, you know, gallon a month customer versus the person that's using nine thousand nine hundred and fifty.
Jordan, can you answer this? I, I mean, it, on these kind of loans, is it the same as like when you buy a house? You pay more interest at the beginning and not so much at the end, or is the interest the same throughout? Okay, so cutting off. And I mean, i- if we don't pay it off quickly, then we're not really gonna cut back on any interest that we're gonna owe on it. I mean, everybody knows that, um, you know, you, they get their interest right upfront and. At the tail end, it's mostly for the infrastructure, you know, on the infrastructure and on the loans, so. You know, that, to me, that's kind of not a discussion to try and pay it off early. I mean, I, I, it sounds really good and it sounds really nice because we've been paying on the other one for forever. And it would be nice to get that one off the plate and not have that one on. But paying it off early, it's not really gonna save. I, I just don't see it saving interest. But if the people, the citizens are paying the money for the loan. And that's why it was put as a line item on our bill, is so when that loan was satisfied, it fell off. So to spend that money elsewhere. Doesn't feel very right either.
Thank you. I'm just saying, I think, yes. Councilman Happy said a big bomb dropped when we lost our sewer treatment. And that is very impactful on this whole discussion. So I'm hoping the big thing we're gonna say is yes, let's move forward and get an RP out. So that we can hopefully know that cost. And that while they're doing research, if we have consensus that yes, spend some. What's still in their budget to do that further research. And he's getting the RP, then we move this discussion to when we have more information. And maybe they can put into the play, the, the new housing units also. No?
I, 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 I would not want that in any of the studies because we do not know. That is houses are going to be built. We're making assumptions that they're going to be built. We have to know that they're there.
Great. Did you have any questions, Mary Ann? So is it that the city administrator gathers more information and. We have a workshop on this and?
On what specifically? What are, what are we, we've, we've got two different issues that we're talking about. We got water and sewer.
Yeah, now I have, I gotta get my brain moving. Jordan, can you? Look at, see if we pay this off in twenty twenty-six, how much interest we save? Can you filter that out?
Yes. You're talking about for each individual?
For the, for the loans that we have, that you're dropping the money down, this corrosion control. Water system improvement, those.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we have the, yeah, we have the either amateurized schedule. We know exactly how much we're paying in principal versus interest for the next thirty years.
Right. So you could tell us how much we'd save if we paid it off earlier.
More back on, more information on the water and the sewer? And come back to a workshop or do we just want to do the? Are you, Bernard? Go ahead.
Yes, th- that would be my proposal is that we, we, we have a workshop specifically for water. We talk about the analysis that Councilmember Bump just presented. I'm very interested in that as well. But we also talk about this rate or big, bigger rate conversation. I mean, as I think about it, just conceptually, there's part of me that says. I want to lower are the fee from twenty to eleven and then not immediately implement. The, uh, the increase on the, the price per, per, per thousand gallons. Maybe we do that in a year. To give folks a, a chance to adjust to this new, new, uh, uh, rate increase. So there's lots of ways to skin this cat, you know? Oh, sorry, Mary Ann. I won't do that again. There's lots of way to bake this cookie or, or pie. That's what I would like to explore in a workshop specifically on the water, uh, rate system. We need, to me, we need more time on sewer because we have this huge uncertainty, you know, cloud over us. Given the nature of our operations. So I feel like we pause that, but let's, let's get water done. I don't see any reason we need to wait on that. We got everything we need with a few exceptions on water to, to solve this in a, in a workshop. That's my opinion.
So have a workshop on water?
Water only.
And then wait on sewer. Is everybody good with that? All right. You got that, Jordan? All right, now it's. Is there anything that we have for religion that they need to be? For water? Or is it for sewer?
I think it's mainly sewer.
I believe it's, yeah, mainly sewer. But any questions pop up, email them to me. I'll kick them over to them.
Thank you, guys.
And I'll, I'll follow up with you, uh, Kristi and Eric later this week.
Okay, perfect.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Not a super long one tonight, um. Kind of already touched on the first auto item with the audit updates, um, the. Reaching out about scheduling and, and requesting information. That was news to me when you heard it, um, so that. Kind of already heard the update on that one. Um, the wastewater treatment plant, Jacobs is not renewing their contract. The initial thought was to just do another RFP, um, but we have also began research into bringing it in-house. We'll see if that's a possibility, so.
Question on that point? Public City of Moser, didn't they partner with another? Local municipality to share that burden or what did they do?
Um, they hired a company called T E C to run there.
And they're just, that's it, they're just running theirs.
Correct. I think it's. I think it's their sewer system and I want to say Hood River does their water, but I could be wrong. I know Hood River does all of their billing, but the actual operations, I'm not, I'd have to check.
So am I wrong in the assumption that there are some cities that are kind of sharing that burden and sharing?
You know, it's, it's a discussion that we've had. Um, Nate Stice from the Governors' Office has kind of commissioned a meeting. To see if there was any interest and there is, but no one really knew how to really start that conversation. Because I don't think other cities want to take on other cities' liabilities. Like, I would love to reach out to Troutdale and have them just operate our plant, but I highly doubt they will. I'm gonna ask, but I highly doubt they will.
Is there any way to go acrossriver? I mean?
No, di- di- completely different permit processes. Yep.
Obviously, I think we're all a little surprised by that.
Yeah, I wa- I mean, it didn't completely surprise me. I didn't think it'd happen this soon, though. Yes, yeah. Um, so yeah, again, exploring to bring it in-house to see if that's a, a feasible option. Um, IBEW collective bargaining agreement, uh, the current collective bargaining agreement, the CBA. With the Internal Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local One Two Five Union expires June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, Labor Attorney Pierre Robert, uh, that's, that's his name, Pierre Robert. And I have, uh, reviewed the current agreement for any changes the city wants to make. The first bargaining session is set. For Wednesday, February fifth. Pierre Robert is a labor attorney for the Lane Council of Govern- Governments. And has assisted for at least the two previous bargaining cycles, maybe longer. I'm not sure. I know he's done. At least the last two, yeah. Um, so that, so that's in the works. Um, so I'll keep you updated on how that's going.
Um, so you're, you're part of the negotiation? That's always been. I know there's not another possibility, but it just seems. When, because he benefits from that negotiation, he benefits from the benefits package, but I don't know. If there's a way to get around that. That's just a statement, sorry.
No worries. Uh, Hood River Reads proclamation. I've been asked by the Hood River Reads. Uh, twenty twenty-five program to read the kickoff proclamation, um, on Saturday eighth, not the first, that was a typo. So it's the eighth, uh, in Hood River. Below is the link to the program information. It still has twenty twenty-four on their website. I don't know why they haven't updated to twenty-five yet, but. Anyways, I've been asked to do that. Um, December crime stats, uh, it's December twenty-one through twenty-four. Uh, kind of goes in exactly what with Sheriff English said. There was that, that spike, um, during COVID. It, there was a bit of a lull and now it's gone back up. So it coincides with exactly what he said. So an eighty-three percent increase in calls from December of twenty-three to twenty-four. And a hundred and twelve percent increase in cases from twenty-three to twenty-four, um, theft and burglary cases. Um, four in December, so. Um, and I think it was, uh, Counselor Seeger asked for a bigger kind of five-year running comparison. Is that correct, Counselor?
Yes, something to that effect. So you can kind of take out the, the noise, you know, and data. If you go, if you, if you zoom in too close on data, it doesn't really give you a better understanding of what's going on. To have a five-year average and then say, what are these stats comparing to the, uh, uh, normalized fi- five-year average? To me, that's much more helpful.
Yeah, and I think the data, which I think you hired that person to do, uh, Counselor Happy, I think goes to maybe mid twenty twenty. I don't remember how far back it went.
I think it was as far back as we got records from the Sheriff's Department.
Okay.
And, and we're the only ones that get that report. Like, they don't do this for other people. It only does it because we've got the.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Because I was asking them for comparative data to surrounding areas. Jordan, he doesn't have that on the rest of the county except for Catgate Locks, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I understand why we would get special treatment given our contract, but. Like I said, that, that data we're seeing now is very noisy. It, it would be helpful to have a much more of a trend perspective and. That's, that's my request.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll work on putting something together. That's a little more long-range review. Uh, and then last item is another reminder of the League of Oregon City Spring Conference, May first and second, um, in North Bend. And the link for a scholarship application closes Wednesday. That's all I got.
I only have one thing. We had a brief conversation regarding the structure of tourism and it's a seven-member committee. And I agree, it is tough to recruit folks for these, these city committees. And the fact that they haven't been able to conduct business because they can't get a quorum. Is, very much doesn't surprise me. So I would like to request that, uh, council consider. Bringing that ordinance up for review and see if may, we might want to change the, the structure from seven to five members.
Is there consensus from council?
I'm sorry, what does it say in the, the rules for tourism? Not our rules, but state rules for tourism. Does it have anything in there?
I have no idea.
Yeah, I'd have to look.
We were gonna get the information and then make a decision.
Wondering if that has a, uh. Limit, I don't know.
Is that something council wants staff to dedicate their time to?
Tourism policy and all that should be online, correct?
We can ask even tourism planning to do that.
We could ask Janice to do it, in my mind, right? I mean, have her research that for us.
Yeah, and have her send it to the council.
Because, um, sometimes T L T funds are. Not in a city's tourism committee, but they are in a committee.
That's right. Are you done, then, Seeger? Is that all you had?
That's all I had. Thanks, everybody.
Denise?
I just did, uh, wanted to say one thing, that today is the eightieth anniversary of the liberation of Auschwitz and Berkhnow. Concentration camps, um, and it is the International Holocaust Remembrance Day. So I hope that we remember the horror and the brutality of that inhumanity. And that we realize today we need to speak up and speak out about injustice and we not allow human suffering to take place. Whether it's about religion, politics, identity, et cetera, and just remembering that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just curious what that has to do with quality.
It's what I wanted to share and we'll put it in comments. Thanks.
All right, uh, I was curious, uh, we used to get a lot of E P A information. I, I haven't seen any. I mean, I know we haven't been on for very long, but do we still get a bunch of E P A information about, you know, trends and stuff? Or what's going on with Bonneville Power Administration? Do, does that come in anymore?
Yeah, I mean, the council wants it, yeah. I mean, I, I'm not exactly sure what information you're.
And also I want to say that, um, at the last council meeting, I did support, uh, changing the spending limits. But, uh, until there are four that agree on it, it, it will unfortunately remain as it is. And also, another casualty of the four-day work week is the council packet and being able to ask questions. Um, especially when there's forty-four page drops on Thursday afternoon. Uh, we spend the weekend asking questions and, uh, you know, getting our questions together. And then we have to be right by the computer on Monday to see if the answers come in. And I, I would just like to see us be able to. Add the information earlier so we can get the questions to you, so we can. Get them resolved before the Monday where we have to, again, delude a bunch more information before coming to council. Um, if we get answers, so it, it's just frustrating. All right, well. Mary Ann?
Oh, you're talking to me? Uh, no, I don't have anything.
All right, Eric?
Um, Juan, can we turn off the chat on the Zoom? And what happens if we don't get? The audit talked about not getting three quotes, and I believe there were times when we couldn't get three quotes. So what happens? In that?
We just have to show that we put in the effort.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, um. Kind of piggybacking, Ms. Emerald Baker, it is important that we make a stand and we. Make it certain and aware that all of our residents in our community are welcome. And all of them are recognized as contributing citizens, and I would like for us to put forth some sort of a proclamation stating that. Uh, I just wanted to comment that L S C Spring Conference, it's in the signature report and the scholarships. I don't think I'm gonna be able to go and, but I've always found this conference is really, really helpful. And so if anybody does have availability and you are able to attend, I would greatly encourage you to apply for a scholarship. Because we've been generous with scholarships in the past. Uh, I want to commend everybody for the discussion on the water and sewer policy, even though at the time we're having discussions, already after nine o'clock. Everybody stayed engaged, asking questions. It was very thoughtful and I think it really reflects the. Financial acumen of the people on this council and your experience, and a bunch of your asking the questions you're asking. So, thank you. Again, really appreciative of the con- conversation we had during the workshop and going through the council procedures. I think really important that we have agreement on those council procedures so that we were working together and not fighting one another. So thank you for that. Uh, something I mentioned to Mayor at the last council meeting, and I'm just curious what other people think about this. But I would like to propose that on council agendas we have, um. Not that we have to stick to it, but kind of a, a, kind of a guideline of times that we're trying to hit on, on the agenda. It's really hard to know if we're falling behind if we don't know where we're supposed to be. It doesn't mean that we have to only have ten minutes for that presentation. But I do feel like it would help us maybe, um, stay on track. And so I was looking to see if we'd have consensus on it from the council on that suggestion.
I think that as counselors and as mayor, that. I love questions and that we're wanting to learn and research and all that, but. When one counselor has twenty questions, it takes away the time that someone else might have a question or two. So I think we need to be respectful in that. So maybe, you know, if you've got a bunch of questions, maybe you break them up. And then if there's time for your other six. you know, if you've got a bunch of questions, maybe you break them up, and then if there's time for your other six, you know, but give everybody else on council a fair shot at asking questions. If that makes any sense. But at the same time, like, we got a 44-page drop on a Thursday afternoon that, yeah.
This is a massive agenda that we have today.
Oh, yeah, I think that's.
It was huge. And so the fact we're getting kind of here at 10 o'clock, I feel like.
Yeah.
It's, it's impressive. Um, but I, I am curious, do you think that there'd be benefit? I don't think that this is something that, you know, this is coming out of nowhere. This is something that I try to do on my own meetings. This is something that I know other cities, uh, also try to put in place to actually have some general timelines and trying to hit as far as getting through action items, et cetera, so that they can finish on time.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor? As someone who's guilty of asking a lot of questions, uh,
No.
I do, uh, endorse this idea from Councilmember Happy. We did this in Gresham. He's right, you didn't always stick to the timeline, but it did help the mayor see where we're at. How, how well we, are we, uh, uh, fitting the requirements of this meeting within a given time set? And I don't know, I, I feel like that's a, it's a helpful tool to, to, to do meeting management, and, uh, maybe it'll help me make my questions shorter. I don't know.
And I will say, it's not just questions from council, a lot of times it's sort of reports and presentations just dragging away on. And I think that it might be helpful for the presenters too to see, hey, you've got till 8:15 to get through your presentation.
Yeah.
Right, and that is one thing they would tell the presenter, you have 10 minutes, you have 15 minutes. So they know how, you know, they, 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 they condense stuff, so it's helpful. At least that's my experience.
Um, and then the last thing I wanted to say was just, we do have a lot of committee openings, so if anybody is, uh, I think it's going to take some active recruitment from all of us to try to get those filled.
Do you want any consensus on that point?
Yeah, and I didn't feel like we're getting one, so I, so I think I'll just finish because I don't want to drag this out too much longer, but.
I have a question on that presentation. You know, some presentations need more than 10, 15 minutes to get the information about. So who determines how much time they get? I mean?
Yeah, like the audit.
I mean, the audit was very important, and it took, what, half hour? I don't know, I didn't time it, but.
In my mind, what I propose is I, I envision the mayor and the city administrator would be the ones who would be setting the timelines. You're absolutely right.
Okay.
Yes, no, the mayor and the city administrator would go through the agenda and allocate time. Absolutely.
All right, no.
It's, um, Councilman Keller raises him.
No, I, I'm ready to go.
You.
He wants to leave.
Yes. So I just got a consensus? Is, is, is everybody in agreement that?
We can try it. I have no problem trying it.
I think the last two meetings were really good, that we've had so much on our plate, and we're going to hopefully get out of here right before 10. I think that's really good. I mean, we had a two-hour workshop, which didn't help council being three hours, no. But with the new council and everything, we have a lot of stuff hidden. I mean, the sheriff was just, that was a given. The audit was a given. I mean, there were certain things that we're not going to be able to get around.
There are some, like the CAF presentation one time was a half an hour.
Yes.
There was a 4H meeting that was a half an hour.
Yes.
But some of those five minutes.
Yes, I agree with you.
All right, let's go.
So, yeah, so I think on certain ones, maybe the city administrator is going to put out some, hey, we're going to give you 10 minutes, because we can look at our agenda and see what it's looking like, and we're going to give you 15 minutes, and then we'll do that when we get together for agenda.
All right, so I'll leave that for now. Let's let it go and we'll see how it progresses.
Right. All right, and then mine, I just wanted to talk about the audit situation. I know you guys get tired of hearing it, but I'm very concerned about the audit. I found this audit to be really complicated, and it has left council with a lot of questions, and, um, and it's concerning when audit results are hard to follow and there's lack of definitions and stuff. I mean, I just, it was very hard. Um, the other thing too, I want to, uh, apologize to the council that on the last meeting that I did not follow the procedure for electing the council president. I was more than willing to go ahead and redo it the right way, because this council is doing things the right way. We're putting everybody on a committee that wants to apply on the committee. We're not picking and choosing. And we're not doing that. I was kind of shocked by how the vote turned out, and I will apologize Tiffany for ever, um, making a motion that you should be a council president, because what a letdown. And that's all I have. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Certainly.
All in there?
Hi.
Hi.
Oh. You didn't?
7:15 to 10 o'clock.
I get that, yeah.
It, it sounds that you, you need to, ideally, if you don't like skin or.